I'll call to order this the Tuesday, October 28, 2025 meeting of the Plymouth Select Board. Pursuant to Massachusetts general law, Chapter 30a, Section 20, any person may make a video or audio recording of this session of the open session of this meeting after notifying the chair subject to reasonable requirements of the chair so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of each meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. There are no attendees in the room at this moment, and I am not aware of anyone recording except for the local scene. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, an act relative to expanding certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on March 28, 2025, this meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person means. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by tuning into the Local Scene government access channels Comcast 9 and Verizon 47. They may also watch the meeting as it is aired live through the Local Scene's website or on YouTube. Members of the public may participate by appearing here in the Great Hall and Town Hall, 26 Court Street, or they may appear remotely using the Zoom link which is on our agenda posted on the Town's website. The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general law tonight, Chapter 30a, Section 21a, Clause 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body. I do so declare that, and we are meeting in reference to Zero Spooner Street. Is there a motion to enter into executive session at this time?
So moved.
Second.
Messiah Quinto motions. Mr. Quinto seconds. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Messiah Quinto?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We are now entering executive session, anticipated to return at 6:00 p.m.
Good evening, folks, and welcome to the October 28th, 2025 Select Board Meeting. Please join the board in the Pledge of the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberate and just as one.
Before we get started tonight, I want to offer a moment of silence for a member of our DPW who, after retiring, after 30 years of service, recently passed away. Forrest Berardi worked in several divisions of the DPW, retiring from an accidental disability after 30 years of hard physical labor and undergoing a grueling spinal and lumbar interbody fusion with rods, plates, and screws based on a workplace injury. He was a gravedigger in the cemetery division, a maintenance worker in the water division, and retired as a foreman in the highway division. He was always a physical presence and the first to get behind the shovel in the water trench, hand digging to get to the water leak or to set the grade for a catch basin install in the highway or finishing the depth of a grave in the cemetery. He pursued with passion and determination his love of boxing with many bouts in the ring. After a long and arduous recovery from his accidental injury surgery, he unfortunately received a dire diagnosis that he succumbed to on October 12th. Forrest leaves behind his loving wife and is deeply missed by his extended family and past coworkers. Please join the board in a moment of silence to honor Mr. Berardi. Thank you. We'll move into our agenda. We have several licenses on the agenda for approval tonight. We have a couple one-day wine and malt licenses, a few two-one-day wine and malt licenses, amplified music permit, common victualler new owner, and a change of manager. Pleasure of the board.
Who may have presented?
Mr. Quintle makes the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Messiah Quinto seconds. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Messiah Quinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. Administrative notes. We have seven administrative notes on the agenda tonight. Pleasure of the board.
All of them as listed unless there's a board member that requests otherwise.
Mr. Cohen?
The minutes of September 30th.
Okay.
I had some corrections. I didn't want to take up the evening with that. Can we hold on a?
So we'll take out number one. Is there a motion to approve numbers two through seven?
Well, can we approve part of number one? We just removed 930.
I suppose we can take.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's September 16th.
Okay. Let's take number one separately. Is there a motion to approve two through seven?
Move it.
Mr. Quintle makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Canty makes the second. Is there any discussion? Messiah Quinto?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from September 30th?
So moved.
Mr. Canty makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Messiah Quinto seconds. Any discussion? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yeah.
Messiah Quinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right. Mr. Cohen on the minutes from 916.
Yes, I would like to make a reference to comments I made during the meeting. I wanted to clarify that with the administrative person so we could come back and review that at a later date.
So you'd like to hold off on those?
Correct.
Any objection? All right. We'll review the September 16th minutes at a future meeting after Mr. Quintle is able to speak with Ms. Anerton. All right. We'll move into the main agenda. Is there any public comment from anyone in the room here tonight? Please join us up at the podium. Thank you for deferring.
If you can, do it.
If you could just make sure that the green light is on and identify yourself for the record.
Green light is on. Joe Palsonello was awarded the Zero Spooner Street Firehouse April 16th. It's now October 28th. I did everything I needed to do, took on all the responsibility, liability, signed it, approved my finances, and the only thing that I got in response was town manager September 2nd telling me, asking me why I'm attending these meetings. It's, and again, September 30th. I'm amazed. I'm astonished. I can't comprehend why you've done this to me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Kate Zakarek, Precinct 3. I'd like to just go back to town meeting for a minute. There was unfortunately a piece of the article for the Training Green that needed to be left out. And I just want to say to anyone who's listening that I feel the town or someone needs to put forth the appropriate article to make sure that this project gets done with the irrigation and the proper historically correct lighting. This project deserves it. This memorial park deserves it. And I just want to make sure that the town is going to be able to complete this project in conjunction with what's already been approved because after all, we're going to dig up the ground, we're going to do all of these things. So I just want to make sure, if I have to be the one to make a citizen's petition for the article, I will. But, and I understand why it happened the way it happened, but it's still really important. That's number one. Number two, before we talk about the Fremont Street directionality or the one-way, I want to just make sure that we're going to be talking about the directionality of it because I want to know what the plan is for the basically three-way dead end that they're going to create by making that a one-way from Sandwich Street. So I feel like there's going to be a lot of backing up and a lot of turning around for the neighborhood because you're going to be well past Lincoln Street by the time you figure out that you can't go any of the ways out. You can't, you know, exit the park, you can't exit Stevens, you can't exit Fremont. So I just want to make sure that we're covering that. And also to the folks on that street, I absolutely understand all of the issues that they've had, but living on a one-way street on Bradford Street as I do, I will say that, you know, the one thing about the two-way is that there is some degree of traffic calming. Bradford is a one-way and we have, I have actually borrowed someone's speed radar gun and have actually clocked 46 miles an hour going down once they get to the hill on Bradford Street. So I'm not sure what's going to happen. I know this, I think this is a trial period, but I just want to make sure that when we get to that point, we are discussing that or someone's asking those questions. And lastly, if you haven't been to BAMP's toy vault, visit it because it's amazing, it's brilliant, it's like just what Plymouth needs. I'm so happy. There's something for everyone in there, like buy yourself a Richard Scary book or a stuffed animal or something if you don't have a kid to buy for, but what a great project that turned out to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Lyden, as we know, we have a sister city agreement with Chisholm, Oklahoma. They are scheduled to come here this coming summer. And it seems like we need to get out to the public because there were so many questions about the funding for the kids that were going or whatever. And I would also, I asked once before, but would it be possible to have the VIPs that went to Japan and the kids to come in to this meeting and have them explain to the audience and, you know, to the public about what Chisholm is and what's it all about? I think that would be great. The other thing I want to speak about is I've talked to most of my neighbors. I live in a pretty good-sized neighborhood and they would love to have their roads chipped sales. I've tried Long Pond Road, Lund's Way, Hedges Pond Road, it's all been done. And I'll tell you, it's a big improvement to what it was. And also if you're concerned about your taxes, this is the most economical way, even though there might be some temporary inconvenience, it'll save you a lot on your taxes if you want these roads done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyden. Mr. Cirque?
Rich Cirque, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. The east wing of the White House has been demolished and yet Burt's still stands. Why?
That was good.
Mr. Cirque, 17 seconds. I think it's your all-time record.
Yeah, that too.
Behind Mr. Cirque?
Hi, I'm Connie Mellahorus, Town Meeting Rep. from Precinct 3 and also a longtime member, living resident on Fremont Street. And I'm hoping that you will support the proposal to experiment with making Fremont Street one-way. This is something that most of the residents on Fremont Street have been asking for, for a long time. In fact, I had circulated a petition months ago before we had the study and just about everybody in the street signed it. I know there are advantages and disadvantages to making it one-way, but I would like to see us at least try this experiment. If it doesn't work going from Sandwich to Union, then maybe trying it the other way. I'm not sure which way is the better way, but it is a dangerous situation for those of us who have to back out of our driveway. We have to look both ways, which we should do anyway, but with cars parked on either side of my driveway, it's very difficult for me to see who's coming up. And sometimes I'm backing out of my driveway, all of a sudden there's somebody behind me. So I encourage you to pass this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Circo, Precinct 3. Yes, it all began there, but mine began at Jordan Hospital when I was born. I echo what Ms. Mellahorus just said. I hope you allow something to happen there experimentally. We worked hard for that with our traffic study for the whole town, not just for Precinct 3, for the whole area from North Plymouth to Bradford's Package Store, which most people that live in this town do go there one time or another. And this is, these things that came out of that traffic study, as you all know, are safety, parking, signage, a lot of things, and it's time that we got moving on them and I'm glad that something's going to happen somewhere. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Casey, is there anyone online? Mr. Levin?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hang on. I don't know why my picture's not up, but it doesn't matter. I recently found out that a member of my neighborhood is a town meeting member. And when I thought about it, I don't remember seeing his name on the ballot when we voted last spring. Our paths crossed and I congratulated him on being a town meeting member and he said, I said, "But I don't remember your name being on the ballot." He said, "It wasn't." I said, "Well, how did you become a town meeting member?" Oh, I get any of my friends to write me in and I won. It was an open seat. It won. I also am on a committee where there was a member of the committee that told me that he became a town meeting member by writing himself in. So he won, but just won. Did he run? So, and then as I watched town meeting last week, I noticed there was about 20% of the town meeting members didn't show up. It wasn't, they weren't on Zoom, they just didn't show up. So I think it's time that this town starts thinking about its future. You know, the budget this year could be all-in with CPC and other projects could be close to $330, maybe $335 million. And it won't take long before it will be closer to a half a billion dollars. And I just think it's important because as this town grows, you know, town meeting might be the best way to run a town of that magnitude. You know, there's lots of people that want this town to be what it was 25 years ago. I'm a young person relative to this town. I've only lived here now about four and a half years. But you know, as they say, that train has left the station, it's not coming back. So we can continue to operate as is and struggle with the things and we need to do, or we can start looking at, you know, what's the future of this town to look like? We need to leave, we talk about wanting people to come in here and, you know, we want young adults to move here. Well, we need to set this town up to be the best place for them to live. On another note, I wasn't going to speak, but I'm on the CPC and I watched with interest what happened to the Training Green. And I will bring up a point and I'm going to bring it up at our next meeting when we discuss it. That project was presented to us as a recreation open space project. And all I've heard about is historic. So either it's a historic project or it's an open space recreation project. As far as I'm concerned, if it's an open space recreation project, then why don't we just light it the way we did Stevens Field? I'm not sure what the CPC I'm not sure what the CPC is going to do with that article. I'm not sure what we can do to it since it's already passed. I don't know if it has to be resubmitted. I don't know, but we'll figure that out. But thanks for your time this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Casey? Mr. Keith?
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Hey there, Stevie Keith, precinct 10. I wish I could be in person tonight, but being a dad had other plans, but I'll make it quick and to the point. Stevie Keith, precinct 10. I wanted to speak on behalf tonight for the hungry, our neighbors who are struggling more than ever to put food on the table. Since the COVID-19 pandemic, the need for food assistance has skyrocketed. Food banks across our community have stretched to the breaking point. And now with SNAP benefits paused, the pressure on those, on those food shelves and on the volunteers who run them has never been greater. But I'm not here to gripe. I always try to pick a fight. Today's with hunger and I came here to rally the town. Across Plymouth, people are stepping up, families, local businesses, nonprofits, members of this very select board here tonight. They're coming together to fight hunger during hard times and I am proud to count myself among you all. Last year, my friends and I launched the Five Gallon Challenge for Hunger. Simple concept. You take a five-gallon bucket, you fill it up and drop it off. Too easy. In six weeks last year, we raised 9,000 pounds of food and supplies, but more importantly, we raised 9,000 pounds of tangible, real hope. But baby, we're just getting started because this year we're shooting for 30,000 pounds and we can get there. What's culminating to be a perfect storm for these SNAP benefits, we're going to tackle it right here in Plymouth. And the best part of all, it doesn't even matter who you are, doesn't matter where you came from. If you're a Republican, if you're a Democrat, rich, poor, lifelong local, or brand-new neighbor, anyone can donate, anyone can join forces with us. It's all about standing together shoulder to shoulder as a community. And we're united in one purpose, and that's making sure the kids in this town, the elderly, those in needs can go to bed with a full belly. So I'm challenging everyone here tonight on November 1st at Bray boat payroll from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We're hosting this year's Five Gallon Challenge for Hunger. It's more than a food drive at this point, it's a movement. It's a reminder that when we stand together, our hearts filled with compassion, we see that Plymouth shows up. So my question here tonight is, are you up to the challenge? Grab that bucket, fill it up, meet us on November 1st because we're going to change this town and we're going to feed the food banks. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Anyone else? Ms. Christensen?
Yes. Good evening. This is Michelle Christensen from precinct nine. I'm a town meeting member. I have had several emails and phone calls this past, I would say, week and a half or so from some of my constituents over in the ponds of Plymouth. And I went over to, as you all know, I, as a civil engineer, I take that seriously. I went over to see what they had, and so I'm excited to hear about the chips discussion this evening because I couldn't quite understand from their pictures, literally handfuls, not, you know, a few things on the side after the project is done, but literally handfuls of, you know, the chips, I mean, the gravel. I was in shock. I was kind of wondering what the heck? And because it's been, it's been weeks since that, those roads have been done, so it should definitely not look like it does. And so either we didn't have a good job done, which I don't think that would be the case, but I'm excited to hear what they have to say this evening because if that is what we're going to get, then Mr. Quintel, I kind of agree with you that maybe this is, there's something that's just not adding up because that's not the way it should be. You should not be able to bend over and pick up a handful of gravel when the road is done, at least or weeks or after it's been done is the way I would describe it. So excited to hear what they have to say this evening and that we can come to some resolution for our constituents because there's just a lot of emails that we're getting about it and phone calls. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Casey? All right. Last chance, anyone in the room? All right. We'll move into the main agenda. The first item on our agenda is the Fremont proposed one-way pilot. We're joined by Mr. James Downey, the Assistant Director of Public Works. Mr. Downey, the floor is yours.
Hello. Thank you for having me. For the record, my name is James Downey, Assistant DPW Director, and I'm here tonight to talk about Fremont Street and the proposed one-way pilot. In a response to a 2022 resident petition and the recommendations provided in the 2025 GPI circulation and mobility study, the Department of Public Works has developed a proposed plan to designate Fremont Street as a one-way street with parking allowed on one side. The proposal is to have the flow of traffic in the easterly direction from Sandwich Street to Union Street and formalize the no parking zone along the northern side of Fremont Street. Fremont Street is a relatively short street. The curb-to-curb roadway width is approximately 22 feet. It is currently a two-way street with parking and the 22 feet doesn't really accommodate for all of that. So that's why we're here tonight to consider potentially going one-way to maintain parking on one side and allow sufficient width for travel in one direction. In 2022, as I said, a resident petition signed by about 80% of the properties along Fremont Street was submitted to the Select Board for consideration. The residents indicated that there was insufficient room for two-way traffic with on-street parking and reported several minor vehicle accidents over the years. In addition, the residents noted the installation of the traffic signal at the intersection of Sandwich Street and South Street had made the intersection of Fremont Street with Sandwich more difficult to navigate. At that time, the DPW felt that we did not have enough information and needed a traffic study that would take into account this request and others, as well as the fact that changes on one street may have impacts on another. Therefore, in 2025, the Plymouth Center and North Plymouth Circulation Mobility Study was conducted by GPI, which collected additional input from residents and their, and their own engineering findings and made a recommendation for converting Fremont Street to a one-way with parking on one side. The Town of Plymouth Parking and Traffic Task Force has discussed this proposal several times. Now including the reviewing, now including and reviewing the GPI report, the Parking Traffic Task Force agreed that the street should be made one-way in the easterly direction with on-street parking allowed along the southern side. Therefore, DPW, in reviewing the data and further discussions with the precinct three and those abutters affected, it is our opinion that this is a recommended change and that emergency response and network flexibility in this case will not be adversely affected by the one-way designation. If the Select Board agrees with our recommendation, we will, we will ask that you confirm by voting in the affirmative and we will put together the paperwork for your signature to get this in the traffic rules and orders. I would also just like to add, based on one of the public comments in regards to notifying vehicular, vehicular traffic, we have put together a plan that does show proposed signage along both Fremont, Union, down to Lincoln in order to let people know in advance that there will be no outlet if they go past Lincoln. Therefore, cutting down on any confusion with people entering as before, thinking that it was a cut-through, which if we do the one-way, it would not be. With that, I'll open it up to questions.
Other questions from Mr. Canty?
Thank you, James. So obviously this was, as you said, citizens initiative in 2022, but Stevens Field has since opened and obviously in the intervening three years, it's possible that some of those property owners are no longer property owners there for one or more reasons. So has there been any recent outreach to residents of the street to make sure that those changes and circumstances have not impacted their 2022 desire in 2025?
Sure. So I think part of what we've done since then was we had, we had the GPI study that kind of had a survey and there was public outreach to those residents and others about their streets and they collected input from people then. And we also had meetings at the precinct three caucus to discuss it with the current residents and abutters.
Okay. And there was not a meaningful change in the stated desire based on those outreach efforts and data collection activities?
Based on all of that data and discussions, there was, there was no meaningful change. It did seem like there was a majority support for considering the one-way.
And in terms of a pilot agreement or a pilot program, rather, what would the duration of that pilot be?
So I think the pilot could be a little bit open in duration. I guess my thought would be that we would kind of indicate about a year from now. We could give it a year, but obviously within that year, if things do come up sooner, we could then focus more, you know, sooner on what is going on and what might need to occur to either support it or, or make changes. So I would say, you know, if it was to be enacted, we would keep an eye on it. If everything seems like it was going as intended for the course of a year, I think at that point, we would probably feel comfortable that it could stay. If within the year, things come up, like I said, we will, we won't wait the year to address, but that's kind of my thought on that.
Okay. So I have follow-ups for Mr. Cohan at some point, but I can defer to other questions possibly, including from Mr. Cohan, before I inquire. But since you do live on the street, I think it's a rare opportunity to hear from someone on the board that serves there.
Lifelong resident with my family and others in the room tonight. I see my neighbors, the Melhorises and the, and the Chanleys and the Hardings. So lots of neighbors here tonight, so I'm on the spot. So, but I, you know, we have gone through a lot on Fremont Street over the years. We are a, an area which people move through to get to downtown for lots of different reasons. You know, we've always been an area of Plymouth where people come for the Fourth of July celebrations at Stevens Field. There's been a lot of traffic through our neighborhood at different times and people park on our street to get to Thania Morton and to get to downtown. So, you know, I walk cautiously on the idea of one-way. I, I think that, you know, two-way traffic does create a traffic calming effect that I've witnessed on the street compared to other streets where it's just one-way. I do have, I'd like to hear from the fire and the police about how they plan to move in and out of the neighborhood in emergencies with, with one option. And then we have to keep in mind, and I remind people to think about this, Lincoln Street is shut down at different times of the day. There are people out with signs not letting you up or down Lincoln Street because the kids are being released from the school or going to school. So we have crossing guards that are keeping you at the foot of Lincoln. So Lincoln is not operational. Bradford is one-way down, down like Fremont. Usually when you have one-way, you'll have one-way down and then the next block, it's one-way up to give people options to move around. So I caution, I walk cautiously through this. My neighbors and others are interested in seeing the effect when the signature drive and when we were going through the process with the consultant about traffic configurations, that was before Stevens Field was finished. Stevens Field is finished now. It does get a lot of, you know, a lot of interest, but from the Fremont end, it's usually not the playground end. The playground end seems to get much more traffic than we do. But I would, I would think that a 30-day trial period might be something that we, as a neighborhood, could experience to see if this is something to our liking because obviously there is parking-related issues on Fremont Street that do, makes it difficult for people to get out of their driveway and that's a problem. But I am concerned about the speed and the, and the emergency vehicles accessing the neighborhood in the fact that Stevens Field, Union Street, Lincoln Street, Fremont Street, they do end in kind of a lost opportunity to make your way back up to Sandwich Street. And many of us experienced frustration by people who would find themselves at Stevens Field and not able to cut through it anymore. And there was a response to that by the drivers that they got very angry and they would take it out on Fremont Street in terms of the speed. I think the speed is something that we're, should be all very worried about. And that's the thing that I would think that a year, you're proposing a year and not like a 30-day trial. What is the, why, why couldn't we do a 30-day trial over waiting a whole year?
Yeah, so you, there's a lot to cover in what you had said.
I think the focus is on the 30-day trial.
Yeah, so when Mr. Canty had brought up the pilot duration and I had said a year, I also had said that, that we would be looking at it from day one. Well, I didn't say those exact words, but I did say we would look at it sooner. So I think we could keep close eyes on it for the first 30 days. If anything came up in the, in the first day, week, or 30 days, we can adjust accordingly, make note if it is working, it isn't working, or if we just need to supplement what we've implemented. After 60 days, 90 days, we could, we can continue to look at it. So when I said a year, I wasn't, I didn't say 30 days because in 30 days, you may not experience all the issues that could arise. So within a year, you'll go through a school season, you'll go through a summer season, you'll go through different seasons, which will help fully get a better picture. So I'm not opposed to putting eyes on it from day one, but I think the one-year might be a valid option.
So the, just to follow up on that, the season is when the Thania Morton is in session. So we have quite a few people coming into the neighborhood to drop children off and then come back and pick the children up. So this is the season. The other season, the summer, you know, you'll have festivals on the waterfront, you'll have people parking in the neighborhood. You know, that's, it's a parking-related issue. And the Fourth of July, it's bumper to bumper. So I'm not worried about those, you know, I can't see how those seasons will be affected other than having less streets to leave downtown when there's a large event. That might be something that the town would want to probably keep an eye on. But for the experience of people traveling in and out of the neighborhood who live there for the school that's in session, I think a 30-day trial period and reviewing this in 30 days to see if it's something that we want to continue after consulting with the neighbors and fire and police, if we're seeing anything. I mean, I'd be in favor of a 30-day trial period where we reconvene and look at the effects of this in consultation with fire and police.
Sure. So I would not object. So I would say in 30 days, we, after implementation, after 30 days, we can come back before the board and let you know what we've, you know, heard or learned or how we've adjusted and whether or not it's working well or not. So I would be open to that as part of the pilot. As far as police and fire, they are aware of this proposal. They sit on the Parking Traffic Task Force. One of the thoughts behind having the direction go, I mean, when you go, when you make the street one-way, you have to pick one way or the other. And one of the reasons going from west to east is because if anybody had a, if the fire department or police department had to respond to a call on Fremont, the one-way will not hinder that. It would be in the direction of emergency response. Now, if the one-way was the other way, sometimes police and fire have the ability to travel up a one-way in the reverse direction. But that kind of went into that as, you know, our thoughts. So police and fire are aware.
Yeah.
As well as the school department.
I'm sure that-
I have reached out to the school department about the propos-
Yeah. Right.
And they have not provided any negative input to date.
So this 30-day for the neighbors is also 30 days for the school and fire and police.
Police and fire, as well.
Because what we'll be doing is putting a great deal of stress on a set of lights at the bottom of South Street that are not functioning at the highest level. Traffic is now backing up. As far as reliable cleaners, through Cava Square, over Market Street by the Governor Cava, into downtown Plymouth and down along Water Street. So, you know, obviously, if we had an emergency in, in this part of Plymouth at, during that time of day, it would be pretty difficult for people to get in and out of. Yes, they're coming from a direction where they have that opportunity. But it's important to note that the light at the bottom of South Street and Sandwich Street at the gas station, the top of Lincoln in Fremont is, is obviously problematic. It's one of the reasons why you want to experiment with one way because the, one of the biggest problems, as noted by Connie Melhorris, is that pulling out of your driveway can be difficult because you're looking left and right. But also, the other thing you have to keep an eye on is the fact that when people are pulling out of Fremont or down Fremont from Sandwich Street, there's limited lane options. Meaning that when you're coming from, from JB's Corner, heading for downtown Plymouth, and you come across Fremont Street, there's one lane. And then when you cross Fremont Street to approach the set of lights, there's two lanes. So somewhere at the top of Fremont Street, you have to subdivide into lanes. And that's where people have had accidents. So obviously, you know, the lane configuration at the top of Fremont Street is related to some of the issues that are happening in the neighborhood. So I think that there's a lot of moving parts to this discussion. And I think it's important that we look at a 30-day trial period and then reconvene and see what the school and the fire and the police, and more importantly, the neighbors and the residents of Plymouth. Because Fremont Street is just not our street. It's, it's, it's a public way. And a lot of residents rely on it to get to Stevens Field, to get to the waterfront, to go to, enjoy downtown. And, and so I'm willing to take the added frustration of parking and traffic because I live downtown. But it is also the benefit of living downtown. So I just, I just keep that in mind as we continue the discussion.
Thank you.
Ms. Ay Quinto?
Thank you so much for the presentation and your explanation on the, the length of the pilot study. I'm curious about how we'll measure the effectiveness of the study because we keep talking about if it's effective. Do we have certain criteria that we're looking at? Specific problems that we're trying to solve and we're going to be measuring that? Because that, understanding that might help us define a, a time period that makes sense for, you know, based on what we're looking for.
Yeah. So I, I think probably one of the metrics we would be relying on as to whether or not it is effective or not would be driver and resident input and comment. So if people are commenting that things are now confusion, confusing, or if things are now not working well, or if there are other adverse, you know, things that have occurred unintended, that's what we would be looking to gather. But in regards to the width of the road and the amount of traffic, I think it's just going to be how people interpret the improvement and whether or not they're, they still stand behind it or not.
So, so it sounds like it's going to be a little bit more subjective than objective in terms-
I would, yes.
So do we have a plan for going back out to the community? So suppose we put in a 30, a 30-day pilot. At the end of 30 days, would we then have a community meeting or have some way to formally get input so that we could actually see what the experience was?
So one thought would be we can put together a mailing and, and then, you know, send it to those abutters looking for input. Another thought, just thinking out loud, where if it's going to be a very temporary 30-day thing, we probably would have a variable message board out there. We may be able to put a message on the board, learning people that are driving through that don't necessarily live on the street. I'm not sure if that would be productive, but it's something that we can consider doing. Yep, you're welcome.
I would, I would agree with Ms. Ay Quinto. I think a, a community meeting would be good. And I agree that a shorter time period is probably wise. I would suggest 60 days just so we could get through Thanksgiving, Christmas. And then in the new year, we could potentially do a, a community meeting. That would be my advice. Mr. Canty?
So sort of following up on that, I think Mr. Cohan covered what I would have asked him about. So I appreciate that. Thank you. But I guess if you're changing the, the layout of a road and the, the traffic pattern on a road, I would imagine, no matter what road, that for the first week or two, there's probably, if you were to survey people, is this confusing? The answer would be yes. Because they've been driving up a two-way street for years and years and years, and now it's a one-way street. I remember the public debate about the roundabouts on Aubrey and how people didn't care for them or the concept of them because people generally are reticent to invite rotaries and roundabouts into their community, even though they are natural traffic calming. And somebody that drives through that consistently, it's really not a big deal, in my opinion. Other people, your, your mileage may vary on that as a, as a resident. But what would be, I guess, I think a 30-day timeframe is too short because I think the percentage of people that are still going to be confused is going to be a lot higher in 30 days. And then you're going to get inaccurate data. A year, letting it go for a whole year, I think, I think a review after a year is a good idea. Because then you have a full, every season, all weather patterns, school in session, school out of session events at Stevens Field not. Do you think 60 days, which was my inclination as a first check-in, is reasonable? Do you think it should be shorter than that, longer than that in terms of like, because you know, everybody that has a driver's license thinks they're a traffic engineer. But you actually were one. So while we have one up here, could you, in, in your opinion, give us information as to how you think we could actually get good, legitimate, accurate data from residents?
Sure. So kind of thinking that through with you, I would, I would imagine a potential way of approaching it would be before we implement the one way, we have, we have a plan, which we do, that shows what signage you're going to be required to alert people driving through the town for the first time. So if nobody's been down the street, you want to make sure you have the appropriate one-way signage, the do not enter signs, the not a throughway signs, the no parking signs where, where needed. We want to make sure all those signs are thought through and installed and covered until ready. And then when it's ready to implement, we, we will put the variable message board out that notifies that, starting on this day, this street, new traffic pattern, one way. So we make a little bit of an advance notice, maybe a week or two before we implement. Once it's implemented, then we could routinely have somebody visit the street during different, you know, daytime hours to see how things are going, to adjust if needed. As well as, while people are driving, based on other projects, you know, if somebody's driving through an area and they have concern, they usually voice those concerns to whoever's out there. Or they know that they can call DPW to, to voice their opinion. So I think we will be getting live feedback from either in the field or via phone email from the beginning. Maybe, I think, yeah, maybe after 60 days, 90 days, maybe 60. That's maybe when we send a, a letter to the director abutters to see what they've noticed. And then they could reply back. In the meantime, probably on the 30-day mark, we probably would attend the, the upcoming precinct meeting, the precinct three meeting where, you know, that would give people the unofficial place to voice their concerns. Or people who visit those meetings, you know. So, so yeah, I think maybe after 30 days, we go to a precinct meeting. After 60 days, we send a letter to the abutters. And then maybe after 90 days, we come back to the board here to kind of let you know what we've seen, what we've done, and whether we recommend continuing in that direction or some other direction.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cohan?
Thank you. Thank you, James. And, oh, thank you. So 60 days, I understand where you would be able to capture more information and go through. This idea of getting through the parade is coming up. That's a pretty big event. That's similar to Fourth of July. So we can, you know, replicate that, that's, you know, and see that. And we can also look as we get through the holidays in, in terms of people coming to tree lightings and different things that are happening downtown. So I think the 60 days would get us through the holidays. So we could see how that effect was. But I do like the idea of, of maybe putting the message board out as you approach downtown Plymouth so that people are prepared for it. And maybe doing a mailing to the abutters that, that they're, they're going to experience this 60-day. And at the end of the 60-day, I prefer to come back to the board, since the board has to make the final decision. And we can use that time to hear from residents and the like as we make our final decisions.
Okay.
So I think that 60 days would be great, along with message board and a mailing to the abutters. And then after 60 days, coming back with our information and having a, a discussion with the residents from the board.
Okay. Yeah, I would agree. I would say maybe at the 60 days, we send the letters. We give the residents a week or two to respond. Probably a week to, you know, put together that info. But we'll schedule it for between 60 and 90 days, I guess.
I just often think of past police chiefs and fire chiefs always indicating, discussions have come up about one way or, or maybe even closing down a street and making it more pedestrian walkway. And it's always been noted, Plymouth is a pretty long, narrow town. We don't really have a grid mechanism to give people options to move east to west. We're pretty north, north to south. So we need to walk cautiously around any elimination from that east to west movement in the village center. So I walk into this cautiously. But I, I do want to see the neighborhood have a trial day period and then a, a chance to express their concerns-
Sure.
-to move forward. And thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
James, if, if you mentioned it, I missed it. Will there be a notification period beforehand, like a week or two where we say, on X date, Fremont will become a one-way?
Yeah. So I think what we would do is we would put out a variable message board. So there'll be a, a sign on the street, probably one on Sandwich and then one on Union. So both sides. And we will, we will say, new traffic pattern, Fremont Street, proposed one-way, starting, and give a date there. We will also send direct letters to anybody who lives on Fremont, Stevens Street, you know, anybody who's directly, and then like Union from Fremont to Lincoln. So anybody within that proximity, they will get a letter, a direct letter, direct mailing stating that we were going to be implementing this on a 60-day trial basis. And I guess in that letter, I can include the survey letter. So that they know within 60 days, they should submit the survey, which will speed up the process of coming back before the board.
I, I don't know if I would submit the survey because you'll get it on day one, you'll get it back on day one. And maybe even before.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would agree. I think the, the most agitated a resident will be is the first day that it changes.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I've, I've met a few in the past in my time here.
All right. So assuming that we would give a positive recommendation tonight, when, when do you think the, the one-way traffic pattern would start?
I mean, there's some information that I need to kind of digest, but I would say probably within, it's probably, it's probably going to be within a month. Because you figure, if I got to give two weeks' notice, then I need at least a week or two to kind of come up with that notice. So I would say probably we would look to implement in about a month's time.
Okay. So that would actually take us out beyond the Thanksgiving parade. So we wouldn't be able to capture that information. So assume, assuming it would be probably like the week of the 24th, which would be Thanksgiving week, 60 days from that would be approximately the 26th of January. I, I think we could probably, I think we'd probably host the, the community engagement through the select board on that 27th meeting, unless we have other business that-
That's during town meeting article reviews.
Yeah. I agree with Mr. Cant, with Mr. Cohan, though, that I think it would be worth having the presentation here. So we'll, we'll, we'll talk about scheduling. But I think we're, we're looking at like a, an end of January check-in-
Sure.
-for the pilot program. Any other discussion? Mr. Cohan?
So just to be, so do you think there's any chance of being able to implement this before the parade to experience what the effect might be or?
I think with providing proper notice, I think maybe it might be better to-
Give the 30 days.
Give the 30 days.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So I think Mr. Downey is looking for a motion and a vote. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we vote to give the, the engineering department, excuse me, Jane, Mr. Downey, the 60-days notice, excuse me, the 60-days experimental one-way for Fremont Street, followed up by a public meeting with the select board to discuss the results of that experience and making sure that we notify the abutters and put out the proper signage to prepare people.
Ms. Ay Quinto? Mr. Cohan makes the motion. Mr. Quinto seconds discussion. Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Ms. Ay Quinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
I don't think you're going anywhere, though, Mr. Downey, because now we're joined by Mr. Coyle and yourself for discussion on it.
I won't go too far, but I'll hand it over to Bill Coyle.
All right.
Thank you, James. Bill Coyle, DBW Director, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having me. Also with me, as you know, is James Downey, Assistant-
Is your mic on?
Yes, sorry. Also with me is James Downey, Assistant DBW Director. And also Rick Bossy, Town Engineer here as well. I know we're invited to discuss chip seal, but I think it's important that we discuss the entire roadway program. And I will try to keep it brief because there's a lot of information here. There's a lot of good information that I think is important when we're talking about chip seal, to, to take all the different things into consideration, one being pavement preservation, the other also cost as well. And I will also respond to the other engineer who commented on the loose stones. We have some ideas of maybe things that we could do based on some of the comments we've received on the chip seal process. And I'll, I'll cover that at the end. But first, if I could, I'd like to talk about the plan and how we develop it. And I know you, as a board, you've probably heard this before. But for any of the viewing audience that hasn't heard this, I'd like to go through it. So Casey, if you could go to the next slide, please. Oh, sorry. Up there you go. Thank you. Okay. So each year, myself, James Downey, and Rick Bossy, we review several things. We start with the beta report that was done the winter of '22, '23. And it was updated recently in '25. So we look at that to get an idea of what they identified as some of the worst roads. So we can make sure we're, we're addressing those roads. But it's also important to note that you don't always want to do your worst first. Because if you fall, if you fall into that, that pattern, you'll, you won't maintain your existing roads. So the philosophy is also to keep your good roads good. So if you look at the two columns, the column on the left is roadway preservation. There's several different items that you can select from. You have chip sealing, which is what we've been using. You have micro-surfacing, which has been used in town, in the town. Cape seal, which I don't believe has. And then crack sealing, which is a very cost-effective method of preserving your roadways. And then on the right column, you have more of a roadway program where the roads are more deteriorated. So you have milling- So you have milling and overlaying is more costly than the left-hand column. And then probably as the roads deteriorate to a point of no return, where you can no longer do any more preservation, you cannot mill and overlay it, you then move to reclamation, which is the most costly method. A few slides of the procedure. This is a chip seal road. And what I'm sure many of you noticed this past year and last year is that you'll see patches. When we have roadway that's going to be chip sealed, we have the paving contractor come in as a subcontractor who basically drags asphalt out on the low-lying areas. So it's what we consider a leveling course or a shim course. And then once that is done, you then apply the liquid asphalt. And if you look to the right, that blanket of liquid asphalt also has about 20% rubber. And this has come a long ways. I'd say 20 years ago, the typical chip seal would last you about seven years because it didn't have the heavy rubber content. And why that's important is if you look at a chip seal road, a lot of the cracks, although I will say cracks always do come through, it's the amount of cracks that come through. And with that rubber, that has decreased the amount of cracks that come through. There's some additional photos. The one on the left is the actual process of the chip seal being placed. It's a consistent three, I think it's a three-eighths inch stone. You won't find much of a variation in the stone. The idea is for that consistent thickness of sized stone going over that blanket of liquid asphalt and rubber combination. One of the slides that we probably should have here that's missing is the compaction. We use a rubber tire roller. Once the chips go down, rubber tire roller goes in, rolls it, and then we're sweeping it. One of the big things I'm sure you've all seen is it happens very, excuse me, happens very fast as compared to some of the other processes that we have, maybe not as quickly. But this does happen quickly, less of an inconvenience to the motoring public as well. So this is a milling and overlay. So typically, if the road is beyond chip seal, we will then go to the next method, which would be more costly, is a milling and overlay. We would normally mill off or grind off about an inch and a half to two inches. And that removes some of the deteriorated asphalt. As you mill a roadway, the thickness of the crack decreases as you get further down into the asphalt. So the thickness of the crack is less. So that's very beneficial. But this is a road that now has gone beyond preservation. Now it's into a milling and overlay category. We need to mill the road. The third photo to the right shows you the catch basin. We have to go in and adjust the catch basins and manholes to provide for that overlay. And then on the right is the overlay. The last process that we try to avoid, but unfortunately, some roads have gotten to this point. In fact, we started this week, I believe, on a Manhamett Ave pulverizing. And if you know the road, you'll know that roadway is definitely beyond, you know, crack sealing or chip sealing. It's to a point where it needs to be pulverized. And also important to note, there are some roads that we've looked at. I think it was Rexford Ave Neighborhood, Rick, that we looked at, that potentially tried to mill and overlay. I think one of my first looked at, I said, it probably has to be pulverized. We did some test pits. There's two inches of asphalt. The roadway's in poor condition. If we tried to mill it, it would just fall apart. It would just rip right up because there's nothing left to hold that pavement down. So once we pulverize it, then the middle photo is we grade it. And then you have to place about three and a half inches of asphalt. That's what drives the cost up as well because now it's more asphalt. So you layer a binder, you raise all your manholes and catch basins, and then you put your top course down. Now usually this will involve driveway aprons more impacted the sides of the roads. So this is the most costly option that we have, that we like to avoid. And I'll go through this slide, but I think the next slide is even more telling. But this one briefly, so in the past two years, the town has appropriated $10.5 million at town meeting. Two years ago, $5 million was appropriated. Last year was an article for another $5 million. And then the article, the town meeting members then made a motion to amend the article to increase it another half a million dollars in that past. So this past town meeting in the spring was $5.5 million. And we thanked the town meeting members for supporting the roadway program. So Chapter 90, up until this year, Chapter 90 has not seen an increase in at least 15 years. The town was receiving about $1.6 million. So if the town was not investing any money into the roads, up until this year, you had $1.6 million. This past year, they increased Chapter 90 by 50%. So we now get about $2.4 million to maintain our roads from the state. In addition to the $2.4 million, about two or three years, I think it was three years ago, there was legislation, legislators passed the SIR tax, which some people refer to it as the millionaire's tax. We have gotten additional funding from the state as a result of the SIR tax. On average, I would say it's about a half a million dollars that we've been getting. I believe this past year was a little over $700,000. The previous year was a little over $300,000. So on average, this is new. We're not guaranteed to get these funds because the schools also get the funds. So I'm not sure if there's a formula or how they make the decision. But that's obviously, you can see just on the past three years, the numbers aren't consistent and they're all over the place, that there's no guarantee of what we're going to get through the SIR tax. But it is additional, and we do appreciate getting those funds. So looking at the past two years, we've been able to complete 70 miles of roads. If we said, well, and that was a combination of chip seal, milling and overlay, and reclamation. If we said, well, let's use that funding, the $14.5 million, and just chip seal roads, we would have done 116 miles. Keep in mind, we have 235 miles of accepted paved roads in town. So that would have been about half the entire roadway network in one year with chip seal. If all the roads were milled and overlaid, we could have done 36 miles. But the next slide I'm going to show you will indicate what the cost of that would have been to do for a plan that covers the entire town over 20 years. So 36 miles for milling and overlay. And then reclamation, you would do 13 miles. So this slide's important to note because this is the per-mile cost. When you look at chip seal, it's $125,000 per mile. Lifespan about 10 years. With the addition of the rubber, I think it could arguably be stated that it's more than 10 years now. But I think conservatively, we're going to say it's 10 years. Milling and overlay, about $400,000 a mile. And that's based, these numbers are based on this year's work that was done. So it's very good numbers to be using to go forward. And a lifespan of a milling and overlay, about 12 years. Rule of thumb has always been 10 years, in my experience. If you crack seal a road that you milled and overlaid, because cracks do reflect through on a milling and overlay, if you crack seal that road in five years, and then again at year 10, you'll extend that life to at least 12 years and potentially 14, maybe 15 years, depending on truck traffic and underlying soil conditions. Reclamation, $1.1 million for one mile, lifespan 20 years. If you think about it, the town right now, if the town didn't invest any money and all you looked at was state aid, and we're now getting about $2.4 million, you would do about two and a half miles a year. So every 100 years, your road would get done. So none of us want to wait that long. So we have to get out of this reclamation process. And that's our goal, is once you get these roads reclaimed, you've got to keep maintaining them. You've got to either mill and overlay, crack seal first, milling and overlay, chip seal. You have to maintain them and get out of the reclamation process because that's the most costly process. Other treatments, micro-surfacing. I believe Beaver Dam Road was micro-surfaced years ago. And we milled and overlaid that, I believe it was last year we did that one. And if you remember, if any of you remember Beaver Dam Road, what happens with micro-surfacing is about 3/4 of an inch, very fine, thin layer of asphalt with a lot of fines. The stone in that is probably not more than an eighth of an inch. And it delaminates. So when that happens, because it's so thin, it's hard for us to go in there and now patch it with asphalt because our asphalt is much larger than that. So it becomes, you just drive these roads and you just have to deal with these, excuse me, delaminated areas. Cape seal, a cape seal is essentially a chip seal with micro-surfacing on top of it. It's something that I don't think would be, something I would recommend. If I was going to look at a cape seal, I think I would be looking more at a milling and overlay. Cape seal also has drawbacks as well. It's a thicker layer, so you put the chip seal down and then you put the micro-surfacing layer down. You've gained nothing structurally, really, very minimal benefit. If you put it on a hill, I can see that material shoving because there's no large aggregate there to really bond that surface together. So I think these are the numbers that when we look at our plan, if you don't have chip sealing in the plan, you can't afford to do reclamation in milling and overlay only. That's not, okay. Only because what happens with the reclamation is you need to have chip sealing to offset the cost of reclamation. Even if you looked at, say, all we're going to do is mill and overlay all our roads, you would need over $8 million, between $8.5 to $9 million, just to do that. So if the state's going to give you two and a half, the town would have to commit at least $6 to $6.5 million every year to do a milling and overlay program. So, and I don't think the town would want to commit that much money every single year. Otherwise, you will fall behind. So it's not to say that we want to advocate chip sealing because we love chip sealing. We advocate it because we think it's a cost-effective solution. And I know some people don't like it. So we thought about, well, what can we do to try to address some of their concerns? There are a couple of concerns that we think that we could address. The one that the engineer had pointed out regarding the stones, some towns will stay six inches off the edge of the road. I think the past couple of years I've been here with James and Rick, we've been chip sealing edge to edge and right over the berm even, just to preserve the entire surface. One option would be to pull that chip seal six inches off the edge of the road. So when that liquid asphalt goes down, it should adhere to the entire area. So you don't have spillover. What that person, the engineer, is seeing is spillover. It's not that it didn't adhere. They went beyond the edge of the pavement and there's stones there. There's sand there, too. So there's sand and stone. But we could pull that six inches away and eliminate that. And the other thing, too, is driveways. When they're done, at the end of the day, there's a lot of loose stones there. We could go out there with leaf blowers the day they're doing and blow off all the stones off of their driveways. So those are a couple of things we could do to try to make things better. We recognize the first year is typically the hardest year for someone to deal with because there are loose stones. And as we sweep that road, it gets less and less. If you go onto a road that was chip sealed four years ago, James and I were driving roads over the spring. We pulled over on the road and we said, is this chip seal? We had to get out of the car, we're looking at it to determine. We said, yeah, it looks like chip seal because the stone is a consistent size. But that's us getting out of the vehicle that, we do this all the time, to steer at it, to look and see, what is this? So I thank you for taking the time to allow me to present that to you. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. I have a few questions. So the chip sealing is done entirely by outside contractors, right?
Correct.
And how are those contractors selected? Do they bid for a contract? Or do we solicit them and hire them through the normal course? Or what's the acquisition process?
We go out to bid.
Okay. And are we keep, how many unique contractors would you say that we typically use in a given year for that purpose?
For chip sealing?
Yeah.
One contractor for chip sealing. Then we have a contractor for the roadway, the milling and overlay and pulverizing. So that's a separate contractor.
And is that chip sealing contractor, have they been a consistent contractor for that purpose for a number of years? Or is it a year-to-year thing?
They've been doing this for years, but they've been consistent with the town. As long as I've been here, it's only been a couple of years. But James, will James take that?
They've been, how many, they've been in town? Four years. And prior to that, I think it probably was them as well.
I think the town was chip sealing, you know, 10, 15 years ago.
Right.
So they tend to be the main contractor, to my knowledge, that does chip sealing. So most towns, that's who they use.
But you have, over that 10- to 15-year period, not you because you're at the department, has presumably data about how these roads, who did these roads? Who was the contractor at that time?
Sure.
So do we, I guess, do we have a sense, what if this is just not a contractor that's great at it? You know, or maybe this contractor is better than some of the other contractors? Are we tracking the performance and like the rate of complaints that we're receiving from a given contractor versus the prior contractors? And are we like able to use that in our assessments?
To my knowledge, this is probably the same contractor that you've always used.
Okay.
We have looked at roads, James had pointed out Longquan Road, that we chip, the town chip sealed probably 15 years ago, which we just chip sealed again to show how well that road did hold up.
Right.
So you will always get complaints with chip seal. I do think this particular contractor has been doing it for many, many years.
Right.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's the work that they're performing. I think it's more that the product that they're using, that people are not either accustomed to it, you know, and it does leave loose stones. And I think that's the biggest complaint that we get.
Right. And can you, my understanding is that that complaint process, you know, normal, in a typical road that's been chip sealed, there's sort of a life cycle to the high, the peak of those complaints. And then it sort of settles down, generally. Not each road is different in its own ways. But could you explain in more detail what you typically see? So you do a chip sealing today. Where would you expect the height of these complaints to go? And when would it start dropping off?
Sure. I can tell you that in speaking with Rick Bossy, I personally did not receive any complaints regarding, directly from the abutters myself. I think Rick received 10 or 12 this year, Rick?
Between 10 and 15. I don't know if it's upon the board of Blackwall or Secret Base.
So 10 to 15. And James, did you receive any directly? So that's safe to say less than 20 complaints.
In the whole town?
In the whole town.
Out of, and how many exact miles?
We did...
Fifty-six miles.
But this year, we did 27 miles. So if you tried to calculate how many houses we chip sealed in front of, I think it, and I respect the fact that there are people that are not happy with it.
Right.
But when you look at the volume of people that either felt as though they were happy with it or just never called to complain, it's, you know, it has to be a number of thousands and thousands of people.
Right. And what is the, so road condition, I would imagine, would be a component, a factor in assessing whether a given road is going to be chip sealed versus one of the other methods you outlined. Is traffic volume on roads also a weighed factor? Because I know that in prior discussions with you that like part of the hardening process, or lack of a better term, is that it's compacted over time as vehicles and street sweepers and trucks and such are driving over it. So is the traffic that a given road receives a factor in whether a road is chip sealed? Or is it just the condition of that road?
It's primarily the condition. In terms of traffic, the traffic would only affect the condition of the roadway before we chip seal. But in terms of what roads we do chip seal, we wouldn't say, well, this road has 5,000 cars a day, so let's chip seal. This one has 50 cars a day, so let's not chip seal. We don't factor that in.
Okay.
And I will add to that, I have looked at, because I figured the board was going to discuss some of these things. So I looked at different numbers, how can you look at this?
Right.
If it was a local road, cul-de-sacs, do we say, we won't chip seal there? We're going to mill and overlay those roads. And we're going to chip seal collector roads. Maybe not arterios because you wouldn't want to use them on arterios. The numbers still come into the $8 million range, even if you were to say, we are not going to chip seal residential neighborhood roads.
Sure.
The numbers are still up around $8 million of what you need to maintain your roads.
Okay. And are the assessment criteria that we are using, are they consistent with what other communities, either in the Commonwealth or nationally, do? Or do we have, are there like different schools of thought as to whether a given road is going to be chip sealed or milling and overlaid or these other methods? Is it an industry-wide practice that you're adhering to? Or are you like, I'm this school, there's this school over here? Could you explain that?
Well, I can't tell you how other engineers might perceive what they should be doing. I can just say that I've been doing this for over 30 years now. I can just say that I, I've been doing this for over thirty years now, and I can tell when a road should be pulverized or mill and, mill and overlay. Um, you know, James and I look at them together.
Sure.
To try to bounce off each other. If there's something that's in the middle?
Yep.
Should this be a chip seal, or should this be a mill and overlay? Because obviously, there are times when a road is on that margin, and then you have to make a decision. So it's, um, there's no cut-and-dry, uh, process where you say, "We have, you know, ten cracks every five, five feet," or whatever. There's no methodology in that way. It's more your experience on, "Will this road last?" And I will say, the technology has evolved, so I even think some of the thought process has changed. Because even myself, twenty years ago, I was looking at roads that didn't have any rubber and the chip seal. And I wasn't gonna chip seal any roads because I saw them cracking, and, and within seven years, they needed to be done again.
Sure.
So, cracks will come through, but now with the, uh, the addition of the rubber, it's, it's much less.
Okay.
So, it, it holds up much better now. So, um, I will say that some, some towns will back away from chip sealing because they don't wanna hear any complaints. So the easy thing to say is, "Then we just won't chip seal anymore." But there's a big expense to doing that, and we're only here to give you the information. If the town decided that we don't wanna chip seal anymore, that's a decision, but that, that's a costly decision that the town would have to make.
Do you get, what, what, so you had, got about seventeen complaints related to chip sealing of roads. What about other conditions of roads? Either, "My road has too many potholes," or, "My road is completely broken down into gravel already," basically, because it's in such poor condition, or, "You did mill overlay, mill and overlay my road, and I hate that." What, like, what sort of, what's your complaint volume in regards to other methods of roads?
I can't say I've received complaints that people hate a mill and overlay or, or hate reclamation.
Okay.
I, I haven't received any of those. In terms of potholes, that my road, uh, we have a ton of potholes, we get them.
Right.
But those typically go to my highway manager.
Okay.
So he would get those, and I wouldn't necessarily see those, but I can tell you that, and I think even the town managers can agree, that that for years has been our number-one complaint, is potholes.
I would agree.
Yeah.
We get a lot of those complaints as well.
I don't personally get a lot of those, because they go to see, click, fix.
Yes.
And then town manager takes, I mean, town manager, highway manager, sorry, takes, takes care of it.
Okay.
But it is our number-one complaint.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Quinto?
Thank you all for being here. I really wasn't so much interested in the presentation as we already had it. The reason I wanted to have this discussion is the number of residents in this town that is a lot more than seventeen are very unhappy with this. And, you know, if we're gonna do the financials for what it costs to do a road, we have excise tax, I believe. Does a hundred percent of our excise tax go for repairing the roads? Okay, so, we can go back and forth with a, with a conversation with excise tax and why we're not using it to, uh, fix our roads. However, there's a lot of people that are unhappy, and that's why I brought it up, and, and that's who I work for, so I don't know if the board wants me to read these letters. I have a petition here, very informative one, with all kinds of pitches, uh, very good packet here. Elaine Allegrini was, uh, kind enough to stop by today, so I apologize for not sharing it with you, but she's had a little health issue, but she was gonna come tonight and she couldn't. But she did make copies for all the board members. So I'm just gonna take one for me, and, uh, well, one for Bill and myself, and we'll go this way. There you go. There should be one for everybody. If not, I'll give them, that's another one with signatures. So I'm just gonna, uh, read you this one. "The residents of Abitram, Cary, Fair Oaks, Vine Brook Roads need your help as our select board members. During the summer, a substandard product called chip seal, better known as cheap seal, was applied in our neighborhood on the roads stated above. Since that time, many of the homeowners and the taxpayers who reside in this have already experienced issues with this. Substandard coating and what we certainly will be a costly experiment and a waste of our taxpayer dollars. As our constituents, we have placed our faith in you to represent us, and we are asking you to take remedial action to correct this issue with the roads and the travel we live on for several reasons. We will articulate many of the problems that residents are experiencing and include photos to support what we are indicating. Imagine having a sign to enter your street or road that's warning you about loose stones, and you must go very slow. Apparently, someone knows it's a problem needing to warn you. Here are some of the issues we have arisen, that have arisen, excuse me, because of this poor type of resurfacing and quite frankly, a slap on our face to our neighborhood. The concerns are both material and safety. The process that they use is not recommended for the condition of our roads. Most importantly, there are safety concerns probably not brought about by the incorrect application of a product not intended for the condition of our roads by the contractor. The listing includes excessive stones all over the place being tracked into our homes while they stick to the bottom of your shoes, and they don't realize it until the time at which you notice black spots on your rug. And then, of course, there are stones that find their way into your driveway, onto your tires, and have caused damage to newly refurbished rims. Recently, on my wife's car, the vehicle, there was a loud screeching sound. They drove, that, as she drove, fortunately, I'm familiar with vehicles, jacked up her car, removed the tire, and could hear the scratching sound from moving the caliper and a rotor, and a stone fell out, that was the black ones that was used in the road, scratching the rotor and causing the screeching sound, I removed it. Another neighbor had the same problem, and unfortunately had to go to a garage and pay to have the repair. One can clearly see the unevenness and cracks refilled with this, and obvious to see the grooves now on the surface, which wasn't very, would last very long, excuse me. In a neighborhood where many of our children would enjoy skateboards, now find it almost import, impossible to use them in a very uneven granular service. A few of those, uh, children have fallen because of the coarseness of the surface. They have cuts, scratches, and bruises as a result. Many people like to bicycle on our roads because it is nice and a scenic area. They must be very careful when making turns because the loose aggregate all over the place causes instability with bicycle tires. The stones which are everywhere get into the, uh, tire tread. Some have a, uh, cement driveway, which will see black patches as you back into the drive and out of the driveway. There will also be photos that you can clearly see where you turn your tire and it is scraping up the thin mixture of stone and tar. It has been noted by many, this should not be used on our streets, and have clearly surpassed their lifetime. It's only intended to be for repairs, and this is their opinion naturally, included in the literature provided. Another noted flaw will be during the wintertime when the snowplows will tear up some of the service, surface. Other areas of this product will be used, as stated, in five to seven years, while the real asphalt lasts up to twenty years or more. Our original streets have lasted well beyond about a twenty-year limit, and really does not deserve patchwork. It deserves quality resurfacing, not from what we are dealing with now. We respectfully ask that you, our elected officials, respond to our concerns by repairing the streets that we live on to a level that is acceptable and safe, and it means refinishing with quality resurfacing, than that we want not for resurfacing attempt to save money, when in the end, the more money will be spent to correct the ill-advised application of interior process and poor attempt as a solution. Our roads have met their life expectancy and need to be replaced, not repaired." And it just goes on to say that. But, and this is another issue that they're all having, and some of them are here. Um, we are all citizens, we all pay the same tax equity in the town. The streets that were replaced with quality resurfacing are Brentwood, Estates, Emmy Road, Brook Road, and Alden Road. So, this is, this is the other part that I'm hearing when I go into these neighborhoods, is that, you know, "Why do we get the chip seal? And yet, the next street and the street after that, you use, you know..." And I don't have all the answers for that, and it's not to put you on the hot spot, but one question I have to ask is, "When do we start chip sealing?" Because I've been around a little bit, and I've never heard it until recently.
I can let James answer that, but I think they did, they were chip sealing years ago, and, um, prior, a year prior to me starting, they were chip sealing again. But, um, James, you have the history on chip seal?
Uh, so I don't know when we first started chip seal, but we do have records of the chip seal being done back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and then there was a period we didn't do it until more recently.
Well, when did we start it? Like, this year? Was it fair to say a couple of months ago, several months ago?
What do you mean, for this year? When did we start this year? Um, I think we started maybe in May or June?
Okay.
June?
And that, that's when the complaints started coming. I'm not gonna read the one I just handed out, because I just got it today also, but this is a different section of town.
And again, I, I will agree that it's the first year that you get the bulk of them.
Yeah, Yale Ave, Princeton Road, Dartmouth Road, Anawan Road. I know these are in West Plymouth. The one that I was reading off is, I believe, off of Mannheim Ave and all the side streets down there.
Yeah. Well, all I can say is that, that the town, if they, you choose to make a decision on which way you wanna go, it's, it's just one's gonna cost more than the other. We're just here to tell you, give you the, the facts, that right now, we did seventy miles of roads in, in two years. If you go to a, a mill and overlay, obviously, you, you, you'd have to come, spend about eight and a half million to nine million, and you can't just do that, because now you have reclamation, that's one point one million a year. You will fall behind. You will have to put numbers somewhere upwards around ten million dollars a year. So unfortunately, we, we don't have the, you know, the silver bullet on what the solution is to have good roads at a minimal cost. Um, so we're trying to balance roads that are completely falling apart, that have no options, those are reclamation. Your mill and overlay roadway is a roadway that is getting to that point of reclamation. A chip seal roadway is a roadway we could, we could level it and then chip seal it. It's cost-effective. So we are just here to give you the facts. If there's a decision to say, "We don't wanna chip seal anymore," we will happily change what we do and move in that direction.
Do, do you think, in the spirit of compromise, that you could chip seal your major thorough ways? Like, usually as an example, Beaver Dam Road, uh, Rocky Hill Road, Long Pond Road, those streets are all heavily traveled, and they all have sidewalks. Most of these roads, at least the ones I've walked, uh, have no sidewalks. So naturally, you're gonna have that, and, and that's a lot of the problem. Now, Elaine says to me today, "Now the animals are having a problem walking on it." I'm just, you know...
All I can say is, I, I did go through an analysis that if we were just to do collector roads, and we could reduce the annual cost by about a million dollars if we did that. So it's not gonna save four, four or five million dollars a year, it's about a million dollars.
And I can appreciate the money factor, but my point is, it's, with me, it's not about the money. It's about the residents and if they're happy or not.
I don't disagree.
And we'll, we'll have to figure that out, and, you know, maybe we do less roads. That's why my record, since I've sat here, has always been, "Don't accept more new roads." And you'd probably say, "Why? We get money for it." Well, if we can't keep up with the roads we have, what would you accept possibly? I say this every year. Why would you keep accepting roads?
Well, one of the most common complaints we get from people is that, "My road is private. When, when is the town going to accept it?" So that is a major complaint that we do get. Um, so it, it's a concern. So again, it's something where it's, it's, it's a matter of what the cost is gonna be. We, as a DPW, we just want, we want people to be happy, too. We're not here to have any resident not be happy with what we're doing, but we're trying to also get the roads fixed. So if we were to just mill and overlay or reclaim, then you're gonna go forty, fifty years while getting your road done. So I don't know if that's worse than a chip seal road, or if you just go forty, fifty years and just fill, we just keep filling potholes. I mean, that's, that's your option, unless the town is gonna commit, you know, you need eight and a half million plus, and then you have to extract out the state funding, so maybe six million of town funds. And then remember, with inflation, every four years, you're gonna add another million. Because even at three percent, for eight million dollars, it's two hundred and forty, say, two hundred and fifty thousand, so every four years, add a million dollars to what you're gonna put towards the fund.
Well, last year, this community had twenty-three million dollars worth of free cash.
We'll take it.
And I'm, yeah. And, and I wanna see what, you know, maybe a few less DPW trucks, uh, I mean, I hear all the time, this equipment, we don't need it all, and it's not to pick on you, but there's a lot of ways we could save money in this town.
Well, I can tell you right now, I think a year and a half ago or so, we went to town meeting with five new trucks. We still haven't seen those trucks, because it takes almost two years to get them. So we have trucks that we're trying to hold together that are rusting apart to plow the roads this year. So it, it all costs money. We, we appreciate that, we understand that.
And every piece of equipment now, we're gonna go down this road, which I'm willing to go down with you, you're gonna tell me every piece of equipment in that yard we actually use?
The plow, yes.
Not just the trucks. Every piece of equipment you have in the DPW yard, we're using regularly.
Well, no, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, because there's some that you would have, like, the catch basin truck would go out just to do catch basin.
I'll, I'll be over next week, we'll do a walkthrough.
Okay.
Ms. I Quinto, and then Mr. Canty?
Bill, thank you very much for this presentation. I think the numbers speak for themselves, that it really, it, it really is the most cost-effective way to manage our roads. But I am wondering about if there's anything that we can do to improve the maintenance of the roads when they're newly laid? You had mentioned, you know, maybe we move in, uh, six inches away, away from the, the curb. What would that do? You know, what are the advantages and disadvantages of that? Could we do more frequent sweeping? Because it sounds like after about a year or so, maybe six months to a year, the roads are, I don't know if you call it, they're cured? Is it like a curing process that they go through so the, it doesn't kick up as much gravel, or, you know, just to help people get from that point of initially?
Well, as an example, and I think one of the caller, the engineer had called, then, fellow engineer, uh, on One's Way, and James and I were there last week. And when you get out of, uh, when you go, when you get out of your vehicle and you look at the pavement, you can't, those rock, those stones are embedded in that liquid asphalt. You have to go to the edge of the road, which I'm sure that's what that person did, to try to get a pile of stones. You're not scraping it off with your hands to get a pile of stones. You're going to the edge of the road where those stones spilled over. So if we stay six inches off the edge of the road, you would get less stones that are spilling over. So that, I think, would be a benefit. Cars don't drive typically on that, those six inches, so I think, I don't see any real negative impact in doing that. So I think that would be one thing we could do, to try to, you know, and also, to your point, additional sweeping, and we do. Anybody who calls and complains that this, we need to sweep the road, we've been out there probably a dozen times sweeping.
And I have heard that as fall, you know, follow-up to people who have left something in, uh, complaint on click it and, click it and fix it, um, that you have gone right out and, and fixed it, swept it up. So that's great. But if you did, if we did move in six inches, would that create any sort of a gutter, or any kind of a safety issue along the side of the road?
I don't think so. I've, I've seen communities do that. Um, I've taken note of it, and, uh, and that could be why they've done it, is maybe that, you know, to minimize that spillover, um, doesn't get into the grass. So, I mean, there is, that is something we could do. I know the contractor says it, you know, some communities do, some communities don't. So I, we could go in that direction and say, "Let's stay six inches off the edge, and let's see if we can minimize the spillover." Uh, when they're out there doing the work, we can get, that DPW staff out there with leaf blowers and blow the stone out of their driveways into the roadway. It does take time to get all these stones, and a lot of times, even after the first winter, because that's the first winter of the plows being out there. But if you go down Carver Road that we did, I think was done just before I started here, I think three years ago, and you really don't, I, I don't see any loose stones out there. So the road, over time, is less and less and less.
I'd like to see us try that, you know, try some, um, additional maintenance on the roads, or that little quick fix that you mentioned about moving six inches in before we abandon the whole program.
Sure. We could do that. I think it, I think it would definitely be better and have less stones spilling over on the edge of the road.
Good. Thank you.
So I understand what you're trying to do. You're trying to triage the different roads and their different statuses because if we were to only do the most costly, the reclamation, you could do like, it's like a million bucks a mile, basically, right? Slightly more. And that's the situation where you'd be looking at every forty to fifty years.
Hundred.
Yeah. That would be a long time to wait. That would be a generational issue for a family, having their road repaired, which I don't think people would be happy about. And I think that, I remember, I've been involved for now twelve years, and when I first got involved, we were well behind, this is before you were in the DPW department here. We were well behind the eight ball in terms of keeping up on our roads. We had a hundred and thirty-five miles of roads that needed active significant repair at that time. And since then, we have been able to make incremental progress to not just, at first we were treading water, not losing ground like we were before, and now we are making forward progress in that regard. And Plymouth had a reputation as a community that had nice things to do, some places with nice houses, but we had crappy roads. And that was what people like real estate agents would talk about that sold around the South Shore, about one of good decent schools, bad roads. We are making a significant, I think, forward progress in that regards. And I think this being a tool in the toolbox for your department is necessary because you, I know from prior discussions about the pavement management plan that there's only so many contractors to do the work. There's a diminishing return. If we were to find a hundred million dollars to throw at you to do the road, you couldn't physically do as many in a year. There's a cap as to how many you can get done. And the only way we're going to be able to maintain the progress that we've made is being able to catch different roads at different levels of degradation and maintain them at that level until we can get to them for a more severe. It's like triaging at an emergency room. You can't get every patient in front of a doctor at the same time. You have to treat some patients in one way and so that they can wait until a doctor is available and take the more serious ones first. So I understand that, and I think what you're doing is positive for the town overall. I also think that if we're being honest, people would complain significantly about the fact that they had to wait forty, fifty, or a hundred years to have their roads redone. And so that is a significant thing because that would not improve. I think that the goal of trying to make people, everyone happy, is an unachievable goal. I think, I'll think the best we can do is try and do what is in the best interest of the community overall, looking at all the factors, making a difficult choice to say, yes, we are going to get some complaints about this method in this way, but if we do nothing, we'll get more complaints and we'll have a worse outcome for the whole community. This, I read through what was handed to me. This neighborhood that they're complaining about is the neighborhood I grew up in, so I'm very familiar with it. Anawan Road is two streets over from my parents' house on Columbia Circle, off Esther Road, and Kristen Road, and Dartmouth, and Yale, and all those roads. Very familiar with that neighborhood. So I'm sympathetic to the complaints of that area and other areas of the town, but this is not something where we have a tool in the toolbox that we're just not using. This is, you're doing the best that you can with the circumstances that you find yourself in. Two hundred and thirty-five miles of accepted roads. I think we have something like three hundred and eighty miles of total roads.
Total paved is around, three hundred and eighty with gravel, three hundred paved with private.
Right. It's a massive, massive community with sprawling roads, many east-west, few north-south. I know you're up against it in a lot of ways. We hear complaints about, from the schools, about transportation costs related to their, to the roads network in this community as well. And I just think it's unfortunate that you're getting a lot of criticism when I think you're trying to do the best that you can in the circumstances that you find yourself in. So I just wanted to say that I think that you're doing the best that you can and that your employees are doing the best that they can based on all the factors that you're dealing with and all the financial realities, physical realities, and contractor limitations that you have to deal with. So I appreciate your work. I'm sure you're going to continue to get complaints fairly or unfairly. So will we. That's part of the job, but thank you for being here. And I think we should keep chip sealing as an option. I think looking at some of the solutions that were brought up here and those factors is, would be meaningful. I don't think we should just ignore complaints and accept that it's just a fait accompli that these complaints are a complaint and we don't do anything about them.
Right.
But I don't think throwing the baby out with the bathwater is in the best interest of this community. So.
Thank you. And I will reiterate that. We, when any resident calls and says, can you come sweep our road? We do get out there and sweep it again. So it's, we are trying to accommodate those concerns. One of the things I'll add to is that as we go further into the program over the years and the roads that are being reclaimed right now at that one point one million dollars, if we can get away from reclaiming roads, and it's going to take several years to get there, you could then move towards doing maybe more mill and overlays because you don't have to spend a million dollars a mile to reclaim roads. So there is a balance. We've done seventy miles in two years, you know, in a total of four years. We theoretically, if we were to continue this level of funding, could have all the roads done at least once.
Right, and I think that's very important. And then we could start targeting the roads that need, because we found ourselves in a situation where we were at a, basically a crisis point. It was, some of our roads look so bad, it looked like we had been actively shelled by a hostile force. They were quite bad a while ago, and we've made significant progress in that regard. And once the roads are at that triage level throughout the community, then we can target the ones that need the most attention. But the only, the only way out is through, and we are in that position right now where we are going through, and we are trying to get to a point where we can target the money to where it is most needed long-term and continue that forward progress, but we can't get there unless we stay the course. So that would be my advice. Thank you. Mr. Coan?
So I find my, the board's discussion is helpful to me to understand staff presenting us with how this chip sale works. This is not the first time we've seen the application process. We're offering, obviously, we have a responsibility where we're elected by the residents to act in a way where we can facilitate the concerns of the residents with the town itself in terms of heightening the level of communication or understanding the process. And I, you know, there's a challenge where we only have a limited amount of funds, and we have a huge responsibility, and we want our roads to be safe, and we want the residents to be able to afford to live in this town because the taxes are obviously going up with all the demands put upon them. But we should really listen to the residents about this process. It's new. We're into a period of time. I did have the opportunity, working on a property for a client on Dartmouth Road, to see the application process, the cleaning of the street, and then the prepping, and then the chip sale. But I did note, and it has been noted, and it's been brought to my attention by residents, that the material that ends up rushed aside on the side of the road becomes problematic. That's where you have this added debris. And I've noticed, walking along roads that have been chip sealed, that there is a lot of debris on the side of the road days and weeks later. It has to pile up on the side of the road. So one of the things that you mentioned, I think, you know, the preventative actions of pulling back six inches so you don't have that spillage, and you would do it on a case-by-case basis. If you were doing a road like Chris, Dartmouth Road, or Yale, or Princeton, up in that neighborhood where you had been working, that residential area would be definitely a candidate where you're pulling back the material. Obviously, on Long Pond Road somewhere where it's, you know, it's a busy road and houses are set back and the edge of the road isn't used as much, that might not be a place where you do the six inches. But I think that we need to be sensitive to these residential areas and these people walking these neighborhoods and being able to move about in a manner which they're not confronting this material. So there's like a quality control, I think, that we have to do in terms of a follow-up. So when you're following up this operation, maybe go back and check these roads days and weeks later to see what's piling up on the side of the road, and do we have to bring the sweeper in a second time? I think that the application process of just putting it down, sweeping, and leaving needs to end. I think that we need, we have a responsibility to go back to the site and to check on how things are proceeding and whether or not we have to bring the sweepers or the blowers in to correct this material because it does float around for a while before it gets settled. So I think that, you know, the quality control process of follow-up might be helpful, the spill control, moving back six inches based on the neighborhood you're in. But I think the main problem, I think, that we're seeing is the residents are not prepared for this information. And we might do, we might do reach, you know, outreach to a residential area. Let's say you're going to go down to Dartmouth Ave and put this material down, that information is sent to that neighborhood to go online to see the chip sale process and the follow-up that will be taking place and who they need to reach and who they need to talk to. I think the frustration is, who do they, the frustration by some of the residents is, what is this? Who do I talk to? Yes, we have click, see, click, fix, but I think that we need to put a kind of human face on a situation like this where we're doing greater outreach in advance of the material going down, that we can reach out and let the residents know this is happening in the neighborhood. If they want to learn more about the process, go online and you can see it here. This PowerPoint would be very helpful to see how it works and the benefits to the town and the taxpayer because the people that live in these neighborhoods, they're obviously paying their property taxes. And anytime the town can find a way efficiently controlling the cost of services is a good thing. But I do believe that there might be some prep work that we have to do in the neighborhood before we go in by reaching out, doing greater outreach, and then quality control follow-up when we're done. So this, especially for these residential areas, I'm not, you know, I think it's on a case-by-case basis in these neighborhoods. I think that should be taken under consideration.
Sure, and we can look at additional outreach. It's a good point. I mean, it's, there's a lot of properties that we are going past, but we can look at whether or not, it's a mailing that we send out to them, maybe a QR code that could link them to a video that they could watch on the process. So we'll look at ways that maybe we could improve outreach to people before we do the work. We may get their calls then before we do it.
Yeah, it is startling when you see it because at first you think it's an undercoat and that they're coming back to finish the job. So an education has to go along with it. And then we have to be very careful in these residential areas where there are no sidewalks and people use the edge of the road to walk their dogs, to take the kids for a walk, the bicycles, the running. The edge of the road for a lot of people is the way that they move around the neighborhood. So I think there needs to be, you know, sensitivity to that with the outreach and the follow-up because in our circumstance, I've heard it when I'm at the store, people come up to me and ask me about the chip sale and the condition. So I wouldn't be meeting my responsibilities if I didn't stress this with you.
Sure. Agreed. Thank you. Mr. Quintal?
Mr. Chairman, are we going to hear from any of the residents in your audience if they want to comment on the chip seal?
Sure. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak about this? Come on up to the mic and introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Greg Tavares. In July of twenty-four, my road was chip sealed. I'm still picking the rocks out of my driveway. On multiple occasions, Mr. Coyle will tell you, he's had street sweepers up there. He's given more attention to my neighborhood than most, so I'm told. I'm still pulling the rocks out. I understand saving money. I get it. Chip seal is not made for residential neighborhoods. There are twenty houses in my development. The traffic does not sustain the road. The rocks keep coming. He did McCagee Pond. McCagee Pond, there's some traffic there, but now all the rocks are at the end of Little Pine. They're all along the edge of the road. When you do Carver Road, Long Pond Road, Rocky Hill Road, those are expressways compared to some of the residential neighborhoods that you are putting chip seal in. And it becomes a safety factor. We've had a child fall in the neighborhood. Mr. Canty, Mr. Coyle, Mr. Quintal, Mr. Downey, they've all been out to my neighborhood. They see what's there. Multiple occasions with the street sweepers and the problem still exists. You need to listen to the people in your community in residential neighborhoods. I understand saving money. Long Pond Road, not bad. Beaver Dam Road, not bad. Rocky Hill Road, not bad. But you go off Rocky Hill Road and you go down Gate Street? Take a ride down Gate Street. Take a long down Gate Street. Take a walk. See what you have there. It's not made for residential neighborhoods. You need to stop the residential neighborhood chip seal. The main throwaways, we get it. I get it. But I've been complaining about this since July of last year. Until this day, you're more than welcome to come up to my home on Four Little Pine Lane in Plymouth and take a look at my driveway, and I sweep it every week. I have grandchildren. Try to get the kids to take their shoes off every time they come in the house. I got scratches in my hardwood floors, my tile floors. Never mind my cars that I don't hardly take out anymore. Never mind the vehicles that I drive now that the undercarriage is chipped due to the rocks. One resident complaining about the rock and the caliber, I've had the issue. But I'm mechanically inclined. I can do it and take care of it myself. Other people in the neighborhood got to take it to the garage. It becomes an expense to the residents. Please take heed. The residential neighborhoods is not what this is made for. I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Is there anyone online? Any further discussion from the board? Mr. Quintal?
And like I said before, I know it's not about the money and, you know, the scare factor that you're not going to have your road done for eighty years. Nick's Rock Road, which I'm very familiar with, I lived there pretty much all of my life, it's getting its third retire. So I'm sixty-seven, and if you divide that by three, it's a lot less than fifty. So I, you know, I don't, I don't, I appreciate what you're trying to do. I didn't come here for an argument. I'm just coming here to tell you that everybody where we're doing chip sealing is not happy on the residential. I can't speak to the larger roads. I was hoping to have a compromise, and you know what? I'll walk away from this and end the conversation. I'm good with it. But I want it on record as being, I am not in favor of chip sealing residential neighborhoods as Mr. Canty is in favor of it. I'm not. Thank you.
Any, Mr. Canty?
Well, I appreciate that attempt to establish a permanent record, but I would like to go on record saying that I am in favor of a comprehensive solution that works for the entirety of the community. I believe it's a bit more nuanced than it was summarized. I'll be happy to speak from my own record, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Coan?
And just to follow up, you know, when you, when you look at these residential areas, I think we really need to, in light of the petitions, the signatures, the comments, that we should do as much as we can in the outreach to educate residents what they expect and look at each neighborhood on a case-by-case basis in terms of the follow-up. I will be going out and looking at some of these roads as have been pointed out, but, you know, I'm sure at some point we may visit this issue again. But I think the first step is trying to accomplish the outreach and the quality control.
Thank you.
Mr. Coyle, do you have any more, is there any more chip sealing paving that's happening this year?
Not this year. It goes very quickly. Within a few weeks, it's done.
When do you, when do you start the next paving season?
So we would be, we would come back before the board in the spring to present what roads we'll be looking at next year.
Okay. So we'll have time to digest this and give further advice on whether or not we think it's appropriate for specific neighborhoods, as Mr. Coan said. I think we've also heard that you're going to take mitigation efforts to make sure that this doesn't continue to be a burden on the residents.
Absolutely. Going forward next year, any roads that we chip seal, we will stay six inches off the edge of the roadway. We will be out there with leaf blowers blowing the loose stones off the driveways. Granted, that first season, you do have loose stones, but each year, there's less. If we stay six inches off, you'll have less spill over into the grass. I mean, I know Mr. Tavares has a beautifully landscaped yard, and so I understand with the spill over, any stones getting into the grass can be frustrating. So by staying six inches off, hopefully it would minimize that.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Coan?
One comment. I forgot one comment. The, one of the other things when we move into residential areas, you might consider the micro-sail that you talked about of stabilizing. I know it's an added expense, but in the residential areas, it might be something that we think about, the micro-sail that goes on last, that helps stabilize these materials. So maybe in a residential area, that might be worth the investment because obviously, we might not need to do that somewhere else in a high-traffic, busy zone. But just another thing to consider when you go into the residential areas, along with the quality control and the outreach.
We can take a look at that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, folks.
If I could, just, Mr. Chairman, just, so we're clear. So the administration was asked to present this evening about chip sale. We know it's been, there have been some concerns, but there's been no formal vote. So as I always say, it's our job to execute the policy direction of this board. I've heard a lot this evening. I've heard better outreach, communication. I've heard non-residential chip sale. I've heard, you know, coming off the six inches of the side of the road. So are you, are we, because there's no formal vote. So are you suggesting that we'll come back in May and we'll revisit this conversation?
I think we, so we're going to get a presentation of the neighborhoods that will be intended for chip sale, correct?
What we will do is we come back to the board in the spring with the list of the roads that we intend to chip sale and pave or reclaim. And then at that point, we could begin the outreach to the residents to say, these are the neighborhoods that we're going to be chip sealing. And we could evaluate what kind of feedback we get. If we get overwhelming, the entire neighborhood saying we don't want it, then it's whether or not we say, well, then it's not at a point where we would do anything else. So they may So, they may vote that we don't want anything then. And then obviously, we would, you know, take it off the table if they don't want us to touch the road.
Is there, so, your chip sealing contractor, is it a year-to-year contract?
Yes.
So, you bid every year? You request for bids every year?
Yes. Is that annual change or is it three?
So, we do put out an annual contract, but it has the ability to extend it up to two additional years. So, every year, we either renew or go back out to bid.
Have you renewed for next year with the existing contractor?
Usually, we do that at the end of the year. So, we'd have to look to see if this contract has already been extended. But I do believe this may be the first year. So, I do believe we have one or two more years.
So, presumably, you'll also have a conversation with this contractor to relay the concerns that we have. So, to answer your question, Mr. Brindisi, I don't necessarily think that we're going to specifically revisit this exact conversation, but I think we're going to have a discussion as to whether or not we think the mitigation efforts are sufficient and whether or not there are neighborhoods that are intended for chip seal that we think will be problematic. I think is what I heard tonight. Mr. Canty?
So, you said that the chip sealing happens over a pretty brief period of time?
Yes.
Is that because that's like the ideal weather conditions to do it in? Or is that just it doesn't take that long to do it once?
The operation is so fast. You drive down a road 10, 15 miles an hour, put down the liquid asphalt.
Right.
And then the trucks fall right behind it.
Okay.
You can do a mile within hours.
Could you, when you're making this list, this would be my suggestion, and I'm interested in the feedback of my peers. But my suggestion would be, rather than telling us what roads you want to do and then outreach to them at that point, when you compile your list of roads for this upcoming year, reach out to them before you come here. And then you can say, these roads, these 10 we wanted to do, these eight are some level of in favor, and these two don't want it. And maybe you could even look at what you would do for roads next year so that if, and also get feedback from them. Because if some roads drop off next year's queue because of a lack of resident interest or active disinterest, you could move up next year's queue into, so that you're always doing enough that you want it in a given year, and you're not losing that momentum. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I mean, it's just a matter of time, but we'll make sure we get it done. Every year, it's constant of what's the priority this week or this month. So, typically, we find ourselves in April, when the winter breaks, to start driving the road. But we can try to see if we can get out there before winter hits.
Yes. And I know your department is constantly being asked to make bricks without straw. So, I'm sympathetic to the circumstances that you find yourself in. But that may be a way to get ahead of it in a way that we could have a less acrimonious conversation about this.
And I agree. From our perspective, if we could make these decisions before winter gets here, it's always our priority. We always find ourselves fighting the calendar with other priorities, but we will try to make this a priority and get that done.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle.
Thank you.
Just, I'm just going to follow up on that because if we do that survey and a number of residents say that they're not interested in chip seal and we move to the next street on the list, so we move them up here, as Mr. Canty pointed out, that street that said they don't want chip seal, they're going to get moved to a different category, right? So, they may have to wait a couple additional years to do a milling overlay.
Correct. And that should be articulated.
That doesn't mean they get to pick and choose. Okay, I want, I want full death reclamation and I want that to share.
Right. They would be in, they would, if they, if they get, it's basically like you take a number at the deli counter, right? You wanted some pastrami, but then your number gets called. You don't want pastrami anymore. Stop and Shop can't make you buy pastrami. So, let's not give people pastrami that don't want pastrami. They can get something else. They can go to the seafood department and get a lobster for dinner if they'd like, when that lobster becomes available. But that would be my suggestion, is that if we are, if there is this large public outcry against roads having, being paved, apparently only 17 people out of 26 road miles have complained to the DPW Department, which is an interesting statistic. But I know there are other channels where complaints are being aired. But if there is that level of disinterest in a given road, then it should be articulated to them so they're making a knowing and intelligent choice that they're going to be in a different queue. But if that is their choice, that is their choice.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Final thought, as you, we're discussing the future and how we address new neighborhoods. But I do think that we should take the time and look at the neighborhoods that you've done so far and see if there's any follow-up we can do to address this. Sorry. So, if we could do some follow-up at the existing neighborhoods and see if there's anything that we can do to stabilize or clean up the material that's being problematic for the time being.
Sure, we can do that.
Mr. Quintle?
The, you know, one thing we talk about on the other side, the other side of this argument, is saving money. How many times, if I may, have you think the sweeper's been to your street?
Four times.
Four times?
Four times after the company that put the chip seal down. Four times. And Mr. Coyle?
Come on up, come on up.
The street sweepers have been to my residence four times to my street. The town's street sweepers. That is after the process was done by the contractor that put it down. I've had numerous conversations with Mr. Coyle. He's been more than helpful trying to alleviate the issue. I am not going to say he wasn't. He found a new sweeper. It's a three-wheel sweeper. It was supposed to be a vacuum truck. That never came.
No, we tried.
He tried. Oh, okay. Well, that didn't work. The three-wheel street sweeper helped a little bit. I'm not going to say it didn't. But till this day, there are still stones in that street. And it's not stones that are left over from the side of the road. These are stones that are coming up. If you send the four-wheel street sweeper down, the street sweeper itself pulls that aggregate out of the road, especially on the hot summer days. Now, we've already gone through a winter in my development, and the plows have plowed, and the stone continues to lift. It's not stopping. We'll save the drainage for another time, but the stones are still there. I don't care about the puddles. I don't care about the drainage. I care about the stones. The stones are destroying the neighborhood. Vehicles, homes inside. As I stated, any one of you, anybody in this room, is more than welcome to come to my home and look what we have going on. Walk through the neighborhood and see what's going on there. And that's after multiple times, street sweeping that road. It's not made for that. Like I stated, I understand saving money. I get it. Long Pond Road, Beaver Dam Road, Calva Road. Former Select Board Charlie Blitzer. His wife complained for two months about the stones in the road. Not complaining now because there's so much traffic on the road, the stones aren't there no more. This traffic on the road is what makes that chip seal work. The stones go away, and I agree with him. But small residential neighborhoods, small residential neighborhoods, I get it. The ponds of Plymouth, that's a large residential neighborhood. I ain't trying to sell anybody down the river here, but you've got to look at your residential neighborhoods and look, and see what you're looking at. The traffic flow. That's what makes the difference. That's all I can say. And I'm not an engineer or a road guy or anything like that. All I can tell you is my experience and the experience of my neighbors on that road.
Thank you. If I could, Mr. Coyle, this is it, right here. By stopping six inches, like you recommended, the stones are still going to be in the six-inch pot. So, I get where it's the overlay, what they've been doing. But the stones are still going to be there. They're just going to be six inches up as the yard.
Mr. Quintle, it'll be much less stones. Because right now, if they're going to the edge of the roadway and those stones spill off, there's no liquid asphalt to adhere to. So, the stones are just loose stones on the edge of the road. And I would just say that certainly roads that we did two years ago, three years ago, we, I believe we presented them to the board. I welcome you to go look at those and, you know, draw your own conclusions. Are the stones pulling right up out of the pavement? Because I can tell you, we went the lones way, and you'd have to get a screwdriver to pry a stone out of that. So, look at the roads, you know, yourselves, draw your own conclusion. And again, we'll be happy to follow whatever decision the board makes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like discussion has become circular at this point. I would like for us to move on in the agenda. We have a packed agenda. I think Mr. Coyle has heard our concerns. It sounds like he's going to employ some mitigation efforts, and we'll discuss further in the spring.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coyle, you're still up. We're going to hear from you about the Water Street Sewer Interceptor update.
I don't know which one's better. Okay. All right. Bill Coyle again, DPW Director. With me tonight is Doug Pennard, Waste Water Manager. And also, participating remotely, we have Andrew Croda. He's the Senior Project Manager. And Ziad Carey, the Senior Principal Engineer. Both of them are with Apex Engineering, and they were the design consultants for the Water Street Interceptor Replacement Project. So, I wanted to come here this evening and update the board on where we are with this project and just go through a, go through a few things. Project background, I know many of you have heard this many times. I'll just go through this quickly in case there's other people that maybe not be familiar with this project. But the original sewer interceptor, which is along Water Street, it actually goes out into the harbor currently along the shoreline. Wasn't, and you can see the manholes that are out there. This was installed in 1969. Because there are two 45-degree bends in this, the sewer main, the interceptor, it's difficult, almost impossible, to actually go in there and do anything with it, you know, to camera it, to inspect it, to try to align it. So, the decision was made several years ago to relocate this sewer interceptor into Water Street. This project was bid back in January and April of 2022. It was awarded to Northern Construction, who was the lowest eligible bidder. The material was purchased for the project in the summer and the fall of 2022, and the work started on December 1st, 2022. The contract completion date, the original completion date, was June 30th of 2023, which was extended through to June 30th, 2024 because of issues that were encountered in March of 2023. Work was suspended because of those issues that I think most of all you are aware of and suspended for two months. There were additional dewatering methods, I believe, applied at that point to then allow the work to commence in April of 2024. And the interceptor was put in service in May of 2024, about a year and a half ago. So, project updates, because my eyesight is not the best. I'm going to have difficulty even seeing that, but I'll, let me just flip to the page. So, the pipeline, as I said, it was completed in April 2024. There are a couple of issues with the original 400 feet that were installed. And this is in the area by the visitor center, in front of the visitor center, to Chilton Street. So, that section is about 400 feet. That there is a manhole, manhole number six, that does not meet the design grades. And there's also a dip between manhole number six and sewer manhole 5A. And so, that dip, I believe, is somewhere in the vicinity of, my recollection was around four inches. So, this, this segment was not built in accordance with the design plans. So, it's not, you know, we, obviously, we paid this contractor to do this project correctly, and we feel as though they need to go back and replace that 400 feet in that one manhole that is also too low. So, the plan is for Northern Construction to mobilize on December 1st and begin construction shortly thereafter, to replace that 400 feet, which again, will extend from in front of the visitor center all the way to Chilton Street. And if I can go to, okay, work area. The work area is shown in orange. They'll have an area where they'll use for staging as well. So, it's work area and staging area. And in the past, they've used portions of the backside of the visitor center and Memorial Hall for staging. We anticipate them to be working until June 6th is the date that Northern is giving us, that they felt comfortable that they can complete this work. So, it's unfortunate. We have to go back. But I think as a town, we cannot accept the work that has occurred there and fairness to the taxpayers, that needs to, they need to go back there and repair this line. We know it's an inconvenience. We apologize for that. But unfortunately, it's work that must be done. In terms of traffic, we will maintain traffic, I'll say at all times in the, about the southbound direction, although I think the consultant was referring to his westbound, but, so, heading from left to right. So, it'd be southbound direction. There may be occasions when, if the delivering materialists for a very brief moment or minutes or two, that they might have to stop traffic completely, just unload equipment. But for the most part, one-way traffic will be maintained. And then the two-way traffic, I believe, is going up Chilton Street, if I remember right. So, if you're heading northbound, you would be detoured up Chilton. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And we also have the consultant available as well if there's any questions. Just to add as well, we do plan on meeting with the businesses and the buddies out there probably in mid-November at this point, and just to kind of update them as well.
Can't imagine that will be a pleasant meeting.
It probably won't be.
Questions, comments from the board? Mr. Cohen?
So, again, could you just, this section has been a focal point now for some time.
Yes.
And the grade between manhole number five and six, this is the area in which you're focused on.
Correct.
Where the interceptor is. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, what is, what is the primary reason, just to reiterate that with us again, of why this has come to a point where it needs to be repaired? Because it was obviously the original contractor, then we switched contractors, and then the job was finished, and now we're back looking at it again. So, if you could reiterate to the community what the, you know, what the driving reasons are for this redo?
So, Northern is the original contractor.
Yep.
They are the ones who did this entire project.
Right.
And as you can all imagine, anytime you install a pipe, it has to have a downward slope. It has to have a pitch to it. Well, this particular pipe in this segment has a sag in it. So, when we camered the line, the camera is actually going underwater and is flowing much fuller than it should be because there's no pitch. There's negative pitch. It's going the wrong way at one point. So, in order to maximize the capacity of the line and to minimize any of the solid buildup in that sag, it needs, we need to go in there and correct this. Otherwise, you're going to, you're going to impact the capacity of the system and potentially a long-term maintenance problem because there'll be solids that'll collect in the bottom of that sag and constantly be trying to clean that pipe.
Obviously, Water Street is called Water Street for a reason. We're basically digging into a beach. When the tide comes in, it still wants to make its way into this vicinity. And obviously, when the pipes were, you know, placed in this area because of the condition of the soil and the filling that took place over the last 100, and I think Water Street was completed in the 1880s, maybe. So, it hasn't been there a very long time, and it was filled. Has, has an engineer looked at why it settled the way it is and what we can do? Because, you know, obviously, we're digging in an area that is a filled area, where it was filled by inlay of material coming in to complete Water Street.
What I can tell you is that when the project moved on to the next phases, there was a very in-depth analysis of the dewatering plan. And there were modifications made to how they're going to dewater that area.
To do the work?
Yes, just to do the work, yes.
But this is, my thought process is, has an engineer been consulted on, all right, this is filled. It's moved. What is being recommended to correct the situation so it doesn't move again? Because we're digging in an area, obviously, that's on virgin ground. It's material that's, you know, fill and an old beach, and we're digging in this area where the tide is coming in. And so, obviously, there's things that are affecting the pipe.
Well, one thing I would have to say is that, you know, our plan is to go back there and make sure that pipe is installed correctly to grade and that we're comfortable with that. Beyond how any settlement may occur of that pipe and this, this potential litigation, so for me to speculate how that happened, I'd rather not really comment on that. so for me to speculate how that happened, I'd rather not really comment on that.
Okay. All right, so, um, will they be prepared to, um, adjust their plan if they dig up and find a reason why it sagged?
Well, I think the whole idea is that, once you remove that pipe, it'll be obvious that the underlying material is, is settled along with the pipe. So, it, you know, if the pipe is settled down, the ground has to be below that. So you're gonna find that, so when they go back, they're gonna have to excavate, rebuild that grade, you know, line it with, with stone and, to grade, and then feel, you know, compact it, and make sure that at that point, we set it true to grade, and then we can start the backfill procedure.
Because if you have lived on the waterfront all your life, you've noticed at different times, we dig along Water Street, and it becomes very problematic, because not only are you fighting tides, but you also have bedried streams and springs that wanna make their way to the harbor in this vicinity. So, I would hope that, that, uh, those conditions were taken under consideration when the engineer was designing this, that he is, he or she who's designing this, uh, this area is, is alerted to the fact that we have a lot of water moving around underwater street.
Uh, we do have the consultant, Ziad Carey, uh, or Andrew Grota, if they wanna speak to that additionally, uh, where they're the design consultant, I defer to them if they wanna add anything further.
Are they here tonight?
I think they're on virtually, unless they...
Oh, that'd be interesting to hear from the designers.
Yeah, yeah, Bill, I'm on right now. Um, I don't know if Ziad's on. Uh, my name's Andrew Grota, I'm a, uh, project manager, uh, with Apex. Uh, to speak to your question, uh, the intention here is to be able to put the pipe back in, and like Bill suggested, you know, using this updated dewatering approach. As far as the design, um, yeah, the groundwater certainly was taken into account. There were a number of borings, uh, that defined the subsurface conditions before we, uh, put the job out to bid. Um, and as Bill mentioned, you know, the intention is to backfill with the crushed stone, um, once the pipe's been, uh, reset, and then backfill accordingly. So, um, you know, the, the intention really is to be able to, you know, put back the pipe to its original grade. I mean, we can't speculate, like Bill said, as far as how or why the pipe might have settled. Um, but we do know it has settled, and, you know, leaving it is not an option. So, you know, the intention is to bring it back to its original grade, and, you know, backfill and restore the, you know, back, restore back to what we had, oh, designed. So, that, that is the goal with this, uh, with this repair.
Okay, as long as, uh, you know, I, I just hope that the engineers and, and the contractor who's working in this area is taking into consideration, uh, that obviously, uh, underneath Water Street, you have infiltration of the harbor and the tides, but you also have a lot of springs operating in this area. I've worked on different properties over the years along Park Street, South Park, and, and, uh, you have water, uh, in basements, because there are springs in that area trying to make their way, uh, to the harbor. If you look at the rotary, and you look to the right, you see a little brick area, and you see where the water is making its way out. There are pipes there that allow the water to make their way out. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just advocating that, as, as the town moves forward on this project, there's paying specific attention to the, to the water conditions underwater of the streets, so this does, problem doesn't happen again, obviously.
And we did see that condition, you know, during construction. You know, there is a confining clay layer, um, that's withholding some of that groundwater that you're talking about. Um, so when that clay layer is moved, you know, we're seeing that confined aquifer kinda come to the surface, right? So, the intention is really to be able to depressurize that zone, you know, put the sheeting in, put those, those wells in, keep the area dewatered to a point so we can put the pipe back in its place, backfill with crushed stone, and then, you know, backfill accordingly. So, again, I, I completely understand where you're coming from. You know, groundwater is definitely an issue in this area, there's no doubt about it, and, you know, we're definitely cognizant of that.
Yeah, I just, you know, the, the compacting of the material underneath, and, and obviously, uh, backfilling in a, in a manner that is, uh, that is not going to undermine the repair. Obviously, you know, you're the DPW.
Sure.
He's the engineer, you know better than myself, but just my life experience walking by these holes and seeing them dig, uh, digging them up as early as nineteen seventy-five, and seeing the holes get bigger and bigger with the water-related issues, that, that, that there are problems there. And as long as people are alerted to it, and they're paying specifically, uh, the engineering attention to it, uh, that might address the issue.
And I'll just add that the work that we did, I believe it was the spring of, of twenty twenty-four, went very smoothly. Um, so we're hoping that we have a similar outcome with this, and that was with the modified, uh, dewatering method. So we're hoping that this will, um, also go smoothly.
Thank you.
Mr. Canty?
This may be for you, um, Mr. Coyle, or for one of our seated colleagues, but are we, um, I don't need to get into specifics, but are we exploring, uh, options to recover any additional costs related to the, uh, original work not being done up to speed, up to snuff, uh, to accomplish the original task?
Well, I can say that we have withheld a large sum of money until the work is complete.
And are we expecting to incur additional costs for this work? Or are we exploring options to not, um, have the taxpayers?
Right now, we are not having any negotiations with having to provide additional dollars towards this project. We, we do agree that if they complete the project as designed, then we will pay them the amount owed.
For the original work?
For the original work, for the, right, for the original design.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ayquinto?
Yeah, just a, one quick question, Bill. Um, just based on what you know now, how confident are we that this project can be completed before the summer season starts?
I'm very confident. I was actually surprised when they said June sixth. I think unless we're buried with snow this winter, and even then, they have equipment, they can move the snow, um, I'm hopeful that it will be done much sooner. Um, for them to do four hundred feet, to me, should be completed much sooner. I don't wanna say what date, I think it should be done, but I, I have a date in my mind that they should be giving us, but it's, it's certainly before June sixth.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Other discussion?
I would just add that, uh, I think the businesses down there are gonna be pretty unhappy about this. This will be the third, uh, season of this project, and this is their, this is their off-season. They're, they're already struggling during this time of year, and to have further disruption, I mean, so, so much of their parking is being taken offline. And I, and I know that parking is less of a problem in that area during this time of year. Um, but anything we can do to mitigate that? Uh, you know, I'm specifically looking at the parking lot area, this, the staging area behind Memorial Hall. Um, if there's a way we can minimize that footprint, can they, I mean, can they use the parking spaces that are already part of the work zone as their staging area?
Well, I think some of that will be used for, for material, stockpiling material and just moving their equipment. So unfortunately, it's, you know, we're, we're driving sheet piles down, um, in the vicinity of twenty-four, twenty-five feet. Um, there's some heavy equipment that has to go in there to do this work, so they need a pretty significant work area. If there's any way that we can try to give some of that back, we're certainly trying to minimize the impact of businesses. I think that was a discussion we had with the town manager, was the initial date, they were saying it was January, but that's gonna potentially push us, based on their schedule, into July. So we decided that we would rather have them start December first and be out of there, so they're not working in July.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's unacceptable for them to go into July.
Agreed.
Um, and, and, you know, what I will say is, good luck in your meeting with them. Um, I do think you need to figure out a way to minimize this as much as possible, so that already struggling businesses aren't impacted more negatively in this situation.
Absolutely. Is there any way that as the work progresses, that we are able to give some of that land back to them? We certainly will.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I just, if I couldn't just jam in, just, we wanna be very clear about this project. This is a very expensive project. Um, we are not going to accept a defective project, which is why we're pushing them to come back. But I just do wanna remind at least the three board members, we had this conversation back in February, twenty twenty-five. Um, and we're still having this conversation. So, the caveat to all this is that we're expecting them to come back in December. They've committed to come back in December. I will believe it when I see them mobilize and you see equipment on the ground.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cohen, one more?
Yeah, just one more comment, just, you know, we don't wanna find ourselves in another situation where we're digging it up again. So, um, the reason why I'm kind of overly focused on the installation of the pipe, I just don't wanna see this happening again. And I hope we're consulting the right people to make sure that the engineering, uh, you know, there's an understanding of why it failed. Obviously, we can say it's settling. We don't really know until we dig it out, but hopefully, people are prepared to do the job necessary. Uh, and we're waiting for the contractor to return, and hoping that the contractor, uh, is going to keep, uh, the cost, uh, to where it's originally agreed upon. Uh, so those things being, uh, said, it's just, uh, you know, having to dig up this road again, if this, this fails, would be, you know, very, very difficult for the businesses in the neighborhood to respond to adequately.
Sure, nobody wants to see that, so, agreed, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Thank you to your entire team, who seems to be here tonight. Uh, we'll move along in the agenda. Uh, next up is a Memorial Hall update and fee discussion. Uh, Mr. Goldberg is here, uh, and it looks like Mr. Brindisi is gonna introduce us.
Sure. Uh, I know it's already a long night, and we still have two more big agenda items. Uh, but I'll, I'll start this, so with me this evening is, um, Michelle Braddock, Commissioner of Health and Human Services, Anne Slusser, Director of Recreation, Joe Goldberg, Memorial Hall Director, who will be, oh, and Emily Wilson, who's also Assistant Commissioner of Health and Human Services, is with us as well. And then, uh, so they'll talk about, um, the revenues, the expenses, and the fee structure. Um, and then, myself and, um, Mr. Coyle will be here to talk about the facility update. So as you all know, the backdrop to all this is that, um, we know that there are substantial dollars needed in order to, um, put this building back in its original condition. Uh, we went to CPC, we asked for fifteen million dollars. Um, that was, um, not well-received by the Community Preservation Committee, uh, but the problems haven't gone away. Um, so we wanna talk about those problems, but at the same time, we also wanna talk about the revenues, expenses, and the fee structure. Um, because during the CPC conversations, I've heard from, you know, many folks about a business plan. You know, and what are we doing so that we don't have to come back to the taxpayer in decades to come? What's our business plan? And that begins with the revenues, and that begins with expenses. You know, and coupled all that, you know, I know, uh, Mr. Cohen has brought up, you know, some of our partners are, uh, like the Philharmonic, and working closer with them and ensuring that they continue to operate out of Memorial Hall. So, I'll turn over the first half of, uh, this presentation to Mr. Goldberg to talk about the business plan that he's put together over the years, and then we'll roll into an update of the existing conditions of the building. Joe?
Thank you for this evening. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Joe Goldberg. I'm the Director and Facility Manager of Memorial Hall. Um, I just wanna talk about a couple of things as we go through the slide. I want you to have a, a deeper understanding and insight on how we do our businesses at Memorial Hall and the practices that we follow. We provide a wide, wide range of services for our clients that significantly help them save costs, but also putting dollars back into the hall and the town. Uh, we want you to have a deeper understanding of the services that we do offer, and what that does provide to the community, and how important our relationship is with the Rec Department and, and the programs that we offer there. It allows us to analyze the cost related to the hall, has it become essential due to the surge in business and activities? Those of you who might have been watching over the last few years, it shows that the hall has, uh, drastically increased, and that's directly related to the business process that we have put in place. We carefully developed our current pricing and structures to ensure that it reflects the value that we provide while also, sorry, while also maintaining a competitive advantage over our southshore counterparts. Uh, strategic approach allows us to navigate the market and allows us to sustain growth. And so as we go through the slide, you'll see, over the last four years, going on five years, we've maintained a growth process over it. So as you'll see, the first part of this is that our attendance has grown. In two thousand and one, coming out of COVID, uh, our average attendance was around six hundred and fifty to seven hundred people, uh, seven hundred and fifty people per event. The majority of those folks who came to our events were locals. Um, they would live locally, go to a show, maybe grab a dinner and go home. Uh, over the last few years, those numbers have drastically increased. Um, we were on a pace for about eleven to twelve hundred per event, but the last couple of months, with the economy slowing things down, we're at roughly about eleven, uh, thousand to eleven hundred who event. The key piece to this is that the people who come to our shows now, the majority of them are coming from out of town. Uh, in fact, they're coming as far away as Connecticut and Rhode Island. They're staying in our hotels, they're going to our restaurants. So in the past, we would get a few people who would just come in, maybe grab a dinner, go to a show. We're getting people who would grab a dinner, go to a show, stay overnight, getting a next meal out of them the next day, so we can maintain that dollar. So the growth has gone up. One of the other areas that we've really targeted this year, uh, the last few years, was that our online, uh, presence and our social media. Since January, we've had almost two hundred and seventy-four thousand people go to our social media. We've had another, almost sixty thousand people visit our website. Um, so we're increasing that presence, we're getting the word out there, we're letting people know. Uh, one of the things that hurts when I hear people come in, like, oh, I didn't know Memorial Hall was here. And so that has become less, so we're reaching more and more people. That kinda thing, it, uh, reflects into a cost savings, and it benefits our downtown businesses. Um, our shows have increased from a Wednesday through a Sunday, and on a Wednesday night where it would have been slow, try getting into a restaurant in downtown Portland. It's really impacted in a positive sense. Moving on, with that has come some expenses. Uh, we pay roughly about two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in staffing fees. Uh, that's including my salary, my benefits, overtime, our part-time staffing. We've added, uh, three event managers, and we just added a third sound engineer. Uh, and it also covers DPW, uh, overtime that we have in the building. Um, we spend another in purchasing services for the building. That's money that we reinvest into the hall. That goes, we'll talk a little bit about that as our business plan. But things to keep in mind is that that number, that two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, it's not one penny of that is a burden to our taxpayers. The money that we raise in Memorial Hall pays all our salaries, all our benefits, and it covers that. So that when we add staff, it's, we wanna make sure that it's, it's money that we generate, so that it doesn't impact our benef, uh, the taxpayers. The in-house engineers has brought in, uh, a, a new level, and we'll talk about that, uh, secondly, is the services that we can offer, uh, and how we get into our pricing structures on that. Um, the roles that we have enhanced our capabilities allows us to be even more competitive. Um, and we'll talk about that, how, once we start getting into our rental fees and what services we're able to provide to that. So, even though it generates more dollars into the town and into Memorial Hall, it also saves money to our clients. And that, you'll see in the number of shows that we're doing, why they keep recoming back. Some of the sources of revenue that we have is subsidized recreation programs, uh, and that money goes right back into the recreation, where we can buy, uh, balls and equipment, and pickleball equipment, things of that nature, pays our staff salaries. The twenty percent of concessions, so every dollar spent in concession sales in Memorial Hall, twenty cents of that goes right back to the building, and we can use that to reinvest. Uh, the entertainment rental piece, so you'll see is what, how our growth over the last four years, what we do for rental, how has that increased us? As far as recreation, we offer a hundred individual sessions a year that take place in Memorial Hall directly. Uh, out of that hundred individual sessions, twenty of them are diverse programs, um, classes that we offer at Memorial Hall. Recreation utilizes nearly eight hundred hours each year, and it generates a revenue of around forty to fifty thousand dollars. The hall in the Rec Department is a crucial partnership. It allows us to offer support, it also allows, enables us to be supportive of each other. Um, also, it allows us to offer programs to the town, like TOT Sports, flag football, soccer, pickleball, dance programs. Lot of the things that we do when we have these shows in our revolving fund, we reinvest back into the building. For instance, the Blue Room now has a full sound system up there. So when we do yoga, we do dance classes, that's a sound system that wasn't a burden to the taxpayers, that we were able to generate the funds for. And it allows us to offer, um, these classes at Memorial Hall, where if it was anywhere else, we would, they would have to charge for that, and then those prices would go up. So, it's making it affordable. It's making it for families that have multiple children, or even a single child, under a single-income household, affordable to take their kids to class, where they can learn sports programs, or be a part of our programs and stuff, so. Moving on, on our concession sales, uh, you'll see, and, uh, it's labeled from one through five, that's twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And our concession sales coming out of COVID, uh, came in around sixteen thousand dollars, and then we had a big jump, and we continued to growth, we continued growth from there. big jump, and we continued to growth, we continued growth from there. That jump was because we were able to enact certain things that helps our clients. Now, this is money that we generate coming in, but this is also 20 cents on the dollar that our clients are receiving some of those benefits. What we did is we introduced a third-floor concession stand, helps reduce some of the lines, gets people closer to be able to buy things close to themselves. A consistent concession offerings. In the past, before I came back, promoters would come in and they would open up a concession stand, and some would offer Budweiser, some would offer Coors, some would off, it was never consistent. So now when people come in, for the most part, all our concessions are consistently the same. One of the things I also worked very hard at is keeping our expenses low. We were just recently in TD Bank North Garden, and I think I paid $13 for a bucket of popcorn. At Memorial Hall, you can spend $9, you get a beer. That's, that's pretty cheap compared to some of the restaurants, even in our local area. So offering a consistent and a valuable concession stands is some of the areas that we did that. We also reduced the prices we talked about and reentry policy. In the past, people were coming and going, and this past year, we put the metal detectors in, and we put, we started really standing by the policy that once you're in, you're in. That reduced the liability on the hall, on our promoters, but also drove those revenues generators up. So when people come in, they watch the show, they buy the concessions, they don't leave and then come back again. The other area that we did to help drive this is digital signage. If you come in Memorial Hall, you'll see that we have digital signages around. It tells people what we offer, what the prices are. Also, it advertised future shows in local businesses. I think we have Plymouth Bay Barber Shop on there, the Blue Eye Crab is advertised on there, so allows us to advertise our local businesses in there as well. You'll see on our net revenue on, as far as these are rental dollars, and you'll see a jump. In 2001, we came in around $110,000. We had a slight dip in 2002. That was because of the bulk of our shows in 2001, 2021, was just coming out of COVID. It was all the concerts that were made up that had to be canceled. So once we got a plateau in 2022, it allows us to grow. And what you'll see is that we had a huge growth from 2023 to 2024. And I want to talk about that growth, because that's a key growth. What we did during that time is we offered a new sound system. When we came back out of COVID, the present sound system in Memorial Hall failed. So it's, we went to a town meeting, and it was overwhelmingly approved. We had it installed, and so in 2023, that sound system was installed about August of 2023. And that's when we started to see a growth. And the reason why we saw the growth and all of that was because in order to put that same sound system in Memorial Hall, our promoters were coming in, spending $4,000 to $5,000 on labor and rental to bring this equipment in and hang it, then having to spend additional funds to get it back out of the building at the close of the show. We now offer that, and that saves our clients money. And we're going to talk about that in a second. The reason why it saves them money is that they save on time, they save on manpower, people come into the show, when they leave the show. And when we came up with the sound system, we did six separate sound studies. And those sound studies allowed us to generate what we call a red, yellow, and green. Red would be, most of your promoters aren't going to touch that sound system. Yellow would be in the middle of the road. Green would be like the Cadillac version of a sound system. We came in at the high level of the yellow, so that all but two, in the last year and a half, two years, all but two promoters used our sound system. And that was two cover bands. Lyle Lovett was the first one that came in. Pace Freely, who recently passed away, was the first person who pushed 119 decimals. Those are the things that artists talk about to other promoters, that, hey, we want to go to Memorial Hall, because these are the services that we offer, and they will come back. Perfect example of that is, oh my goodness, the, sorry, it just, the name just escaped me. We had an artist who came, loved the building, loved the services, loved the sound system. Within eight months, she was back again, and we just signed another contract for her to come back again, so. So it shows that repeat business. Some of the new businesses that we were able to bring in is the Candlelight Orchestra, who's committed to 12 shows a year. Greystone Promotions, Louder Entertainment, Miss USA, who just did their first pageant here. Improper Bostonians, and Easy 99.1, who you just approved their liquor license, will be bringing Taylor Dane here next month. So you'll see that these growths are directly related to the services that we offer. The rates that you now have, we offer a nonprofit rate and a for-profit rate, and we broke it up into three categories. If somebody wanted to come in and just rent the Blue Room, or the main hall, or the entire building. And these rates were significantly higher than what they once were. In 2008, those rates were set, but once we offered the new sound system, we came up with these new rates that the Select Board approved. The reason for these rates, how we got to these rates, was that I called a lot of the other buildings that were comparable to Memorial Hall throughout Massachusetts and New Hampshire. The Cabot Mechanics Hall, the Zeitarian, when they were closed before they had their refurbish, Lowell Auditorium, Nasher Performing Arts. Those rental rates for those facilities were running between $6,000 to $10,000, and they didn't offer the services that we offer at Memorial Hall. I felt those were way out of the ballpark. I wanted to kind of keep us on a competitive edge where we can undercut them and bring that business down to us. Also, went back to what it would cost to rent that sound system and install it with the fees, with the people. And that was around $4,000 to $5,000. So I thought that gave us a more of a realistic funding, a number to hit. So we offer the entire building for profit for $4,500. That's basically giving them a sound, renting for a sound system and giving them the building for free. So it keeps those dollars down. For nonprofit, we went down to $3,500. So these are how we come up with these numbers. And that kind of brings us to where we are now. Are there any questions on these?
Mr. Canty?
So I appreciate the presentation. However, it does strike me as being seemingly almost identical to one we received a few months ago.
Yes.
So I guess this was marketed as an update, and it doesn't seem to be much of an update. So what, if anything, has changed between last time we heard a version of this and now?
So I'll answer that. So this part of the presentation was more geared towards Mr. Cohen and Ms. Iquinto, who haven't seen this presentation, and the issue of the Philharmonic keeps coming up. And so, given the conversation about a business plan, it's only, the only way we can talk about a business plan is if we talk about our rental fees, right? Because there's this push and pull of, we need a business plan because we need to be self-sustainable if we're going to continue and invest in this building. But at the same time, we have organizations like the Philharmonic, who are actually moving away because they believe that their fees are too, the fee structure's too high. So this is more of a presentation to give you the information, because you set the fees. So if there's going to be a decision that we're going to pivot away from the, as Joe just mentioned, the fee structure that exists, then we need to know that moving forward.
So I think, well, part of the discussion, I think, should be what fees we're charging. But I think a broader discussion would also be, what do we want Memorial Hall to be? Do we want, because right now, it's, it's several things. We attract musical acts of classical music, rock music. We attract stand-up comedians from time to time, things of that nature. There's, as you mentioned in the recreation slide, there's a number, like pickleballs held there. I don't know that a venue can do all of those things as well as one that's designed to do some of those things well. So if we want to attract more musical acts, classical, rock, other things, then that's one direction to take Memorial Hall as we talk about a major renovation of it or a rebuilding of it. I don't know that doing all of those things is necessarily something I would want to see us do. I think we should specialize on what we want to attract and what we're getting from that attraction. Are we going to make Memorial Hall profitable in and of itself? Are we going to make it break even and use it as an economic driver? I don't think we should have it lose money and like subsidize local bus, I understand there is a benefit to local hotels, restaurants, bars, other things in the community that our people are brought in by Memorial Hall, and they go spend money elsewhere, and the whole town benefits. I understand that. I do not, and I don't discount that impact, but I do not think we should subsidize those other operations by operating Memorial Hall at a loss, personally. But I think we need to talk about what we, because, and the cage titans, which is very different from the other things, you know, and I know that some of those things are profitable, maybe all of them are profitable in certain ways. But if we were to specialize it and try and have like an artist in residence with the Phil and try and attract additional musical acts, because, oh, you play where the Plymouth Philharmonic plays, and that could be part of the, the marketing for Memorial Hall and part of the benefit of having an arrangement like that in place. I just, I think that doing all the things may not be the best outcome, because then you're not great at any of those things. And I don't mean to discount you or your, your work. I think you're doing what you can with the venue that you inherited.
Yes.
But I think where we are at this stage in the community of, what are we going to do with Memorial Hall, a big part of that question should be, what do we want Memorial Hall to be in our community?
If, sorry, if I could just talk to that. One of the benefits I have is I've been with Memorial Hall since 2008 in some capacity or another. And I was there during the years helping out the Police Academy when they had their graduation there, and the time when I left after 2012. And Anne, the Director of Rec, said it perfectly. She said there was a period where the Rec Department was the thing that was supporting Memorial Hall. But now it's flipped. It's now the shows. And I think Memorial Hall is at a crossroads. Are we going to be the local, not to discount anybody, but like the local Elks Club, where, hey, I got a local band from high school, we're going to go rent Memorial Hall and put on a party? Or are we serious about being the premier entertainment spot on the South Shore? If that's the direction we go in, that is the business plan that I have set up, that we offer more services at a lesser price, so that we are out matching our competitors. South of Boston to Worcester and the entire Cape Cod, we have the largest indoor concert facility. If we want to put our flag in the ground, this is the time. But this is also a time where the town needs to make a decision what we want to do. We have a gift. We have a beautiful building in town that happens to need a lot of work. The last four years, the business plan that I put in place is, we offer a sound system, we're moving towards offering a lighting system, we're offering a full-blown concert opportunity for a promoter to come in, make as much money so that they can take that money and put bigger names. The other ourselves talking about earlier is Melissa Etheridge. She's come back three times in the last two years because she sees what we have here. Lyle Lovett, coming back again because he sees what he has here. We're attracting Taylor Dane, LeAnn Rimes. We're bringing bigger names because our promoters are able to save the money through the services we offer them to use that for bigger names. Now, you had mentioned the Philharmonic. In the past, people were able to strike proper deals and behind the scenes, and they were able to get, like, one promoter would come in and have the, have the building from Thursday to Monday for $2,200. That included DPW overtime. That meant that the taxpayers in this town was paying for that event that they could not attend unless they bought a ticket. As a, as your employee and a representative of this town, I cannot do that in good conscience. I think we have a building here that is able to be sustainable, that we've proven that doesn't have to be a burden to taxpayers if we're transparent in what we do and offer the right prices at the right service and give the right services.
But, I mean, if you looked at something like the Phil, if you did subsidize essentially, I'm not in favor of subsidizing Memorial Hall as a general concept in terms of all of it. But if you looked at something like the Phil, and you did have like an artist in resident type arrangement, which I know Mr. Cohen has been advocating for.
Yes, sir.
You could use that as part of your marketing strategy for Memorial Hall. It's a loss leader. It's like a business that says if you come in on Tuesday mornings, you get a free cup of coffee. They're taking a bath on the coffee, but they're trying to get you to buy a doughnut or a croissant while you're in there, and then you're making money off the other things. This is not going to be exactly like that. You are going to make your concession sales and such like that, but you're, you're able to say, this is where the Plymouth Philharmonic plays. So, you know, you can attract more local acts, and you can attract more regional acts, and the other types of acts that you're, you know, people on the way up and people on the way down, right, in their careers, that that's who we're getting in Memorial Hall.
Exactly.
Right? So if you have that and you're at that mid-range concert venue, because we're not going to be able to compete with like the Theater District in Boston or the TD Bank North Garden, right?
Totally different ballgame.
Exactly. So we shouldn't even be trying. But we should be trying to do what we can in the league that we're in. And I do think that there could be a benefit in trying to make, to build the hall around different types of music entertainment, which would also obviously easily lend itself to things like stand-up comedy, or people want to do TED Talks or something like that, right? Less so the recreation options. They could still do it in there, but we don't need to build the venue, we'll rebuild the venue for pickleball purposes. We have dedicated pickleball courts elsewhere in the community, for example. And less so for things like cage titans, which I think does make some money, but is a completely different use and could find another home somewhere else and still function, right? I think that, I think there needs to be a direction that is charted in that. And I think that doing all the things, I think you're, you're doing the best you can in pursuing that goal. But I think specializing would be a better focus, in my personal opinion. And looking at, I do think that there would be a benefit potentially in having the Phil, even if it is a loss leader, as part of the marketing plan for Memorial Hall around the South Shore and in the broader, like, region for people that are interested. There are people from Rhode Island and Connecticut and other places that are going to go there for the holiday pops or for, you know, this given concert from this composer. I do think there's a benefit.
Yes. And to piggyback off of Mr. Canty's comments, it sounds like from your presentation, Mr. Goldberg, that we have a lot of wiggle room in our fee structure, well below what competing, venues are charging to their artists. Is there a way we could get some kind of financial analysis to say if we had a Phil, had the Phil as like an artist in residence, that type of program? Like, where would the fees need to travel to offset the potential subsidized loss with that? Could we get something like that so that we can know, maybe, you know, maybe it's, if the fees all need to travel $25, that's not a big ask. I think we could, we need to look at the numbers in order to understand what we're talking about. The fees are the crux of this conversation, so what do we need to do with the fees in order to accommodate? And I think Mr. Cohen will talk more extensively about the Phil itself, but if this board wants to have some kind of special relationship with an artist in residence, what do we need to do to the fees in order to make sure that the town is not taking a loss from that sort of thing? That would be my ask for you folks.
Yeah. Well, one of the areas that we can look at, and the Phil struggles in this area. It's not a struggle, they just don't want to expand in this area. In part of my presentation, we talked about the growth in concession sales, right? The reason why there was growth in concession sales was the people who took my advice and applied it, and then, you know, and they gained out of it. Perfect example, Jeff Cohen, right, does the Halloween. First year coming back in 2021, we sat down, we went through the contract, and he was, he was upset that he would have to pay the 20% in concession. I said, Jeff, what did you make in the past? So he gave me that number. I said, if you follow my direction, you pay the 20% to the town, you'll still make more money than you did in the past. So he did. That first year, he tripled the amount of money he made in concession sales. So one of the things I've tried to work with the Phil is how to offer concessions more to your clients. Because in a Phil, right, once that show starts, you can't, that's a captive audience, and you don't want to disrupt that, that performance. So the only two times you have to capture those concession sales is in the So the only two times you have to capture those concession sales is in the beginning of the show or at intermission. One of the things I said to him, I said, let's offer the third floor concessions. Let's offer more concessions so that those lines aren't huge. And so when someone finally gets to the restroom, they go to the concession line and the lights are flashing, you have two minutes to get back to your seat, they're not buying anything at concessions. So I try to work with them and they don't want to. So what I would like to try to do is maybe sit down with them, say, look, if we could try to expand those concessions to offset your rent, then you, you meet that middle ground where we're not saying yes to one and then no to another person who says, well, I would like to be that in-house resident thing. Like how do we say at the spectacle who does 40 shows a year at Memorial Hall?
I, I mean, I, I think we can, we talk about the cultural impact of the Plymouth Philharmonic, I think.
Yes.
You know, I'll defer to Mr. Cohen to let him discuss that. But I, I think there's, and Mr. Canty even said, there's, there's a, a marketing benefit that could go along with that. But I'll give the floor to Mr. Cohen.
I defer to Deb. She's.
Oh, Ms. Iquinto.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Mr. Canty and Mr. Golden. I, I'm a little bit confused about the purpose of this presentation. I do think it's a, it's a very good overview of the current state of Memorial Hall, but really what we, we need is to, to look to the future. And Mr. Brindisi, I know that there's been, there is some work underway to develop a go-forward business strategy for the, for, for Memorial Hall. So that's why I think this might be a little bit confusing for us. But if this is to help us talk about the future of the Phil, I think we should just get, get right to it and, and talk about that. Because it's not unusual for a musical venue like this to have what they call not so much an artist in resident, but a resident orchestra. You know, and I'll look at, I'm going to use the BSO as an example. They are the resident orchestra for Symphony Hall and they have a mutually beneficial arrangement with Symphony Hall. They get something, Symphony Hall gets something. Now, we're not Symphony Hall, maybe one day we will be, but I think that's what we're asking for here. It's not so much, you know, can we charge more for concessions or can we sell more peanuts to offset the cost? It's more what is truly a mutually beneficial business relationship for the Phil and for Memorial Hall? And can, is that something that we can start now while we're looking at the future of, of the Hall? I think, I don't think we should conflate the two issues, like the, the resident orchestra issue is one that we might be able to solve right now while we're looking at the future of, of Memorial Hall. So.
Thank you. And it was, it's always helpful to have, listen to my fellow board members and, and go through this presentation. Yes, Deb and I are newer to the board and we've seen different levels of presentation. But I think that Kevin and David and Deb hit on something and I think that obviously the future is not determined about what direction will go on Memorial Hall. We're just dealing with the here and now. Obviously, we've done appropriate studies. Town meeting has authorized money to do further research. This information is going to lead to a decision what direction we want to go in and, and how we're going to find the funding to, to meet the challenges for the building as you move it into a different realm. But I do think that the focus should be on the here and now in terms of how we could possibly work with the Philharmonic here in Plymouth. They've been here for 100 years.
Yes, sir.
They're probably our, you know, flagship or premier cultural entity that we have in our community. Very few towns south of Boston have such a resource.
Yes, sir.
And we have to think about the relationship that the Phil has had with our community over the years for, for a number of years, not in the last year, but the 10 years preceding. The Phil was working with our public school system, going to third and fourth grade in seven different schools in Plymouth. They were investing a $50,000 program in the school system, going and bringing these educational experience with young children in, in the music that they provide. And then it culminated in a free concert at Memorial Hall with, with the students.
Yes.
This is a valuable component to our community, that residents in the school system are partnering with the Philharmonic that is creating a curriculum around Carnegie Hall, the Carnegie Program. So this is bringing a level of material and benefit to the town that's beyond Memorial Hall in, in some ways. And then they do their free concert on the waterfront on the Fourth of July. They do get assistance from the visitor's service, but for many years they were on their own and that was costing them $60,000 in terms of renting equipment and doing different things. So they were doing things in Plymouth on a yearly basis, free concerts, working with the school system. So we have an entity that really is a partner with our community culturally.
Yes, sir.
And obviously, as we determine what to do with the Plymouth Film, excuse me, what we do with Pilgrim, Plymouth Hall, Memorial Hall, will be, will have a lot to do with our relationship with Beacon Hill. Because obviously, this amount of money that we're looking at to modernize the facility as, as Deb and Kevin and David have outlined, is going to require a partnership with our state delegation to find the necessary funding. A lot of the funding that we received back in 1999, it was around $9 million and that was coming from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But it had a lot to do with the Phil partnering with the town to lobby Beacon Hill for those, that funding. So, you know, our, our work is cut out for us in the future and I think we need to strengthen our relationship with the Plymouth Philharmonic. I think we need to reboot it. Because listening to your presentation, you're doing what you can to move the Hall forward and, and the Phil is doing what it can to bring services beyond Memorial Hall to the community. So I think that the focus right now should be the here and now and trying to sit down with the Philharmonic and trying to make a determination how we could have some sort of arrangement like a resident, Edison residence or possibly, as Deb indicated, the orchestra in residence. These are concepts that we could specifically sit down and work with them as partners, but I really truly believe that at this point that we need to reboot our discussion with them. I know discussions have been going on for some time.
Yes, sir.
We need to probably do a, have the Phil come in and, and engage the town on creating a dialogue and a discussion of how we can move forward to make those costs more manageable for them. They're not like the normal lighting and sound operation because they're not on the stage, they're on the floor.
Yes, sir.
So they're still having to bring in a lot of equipment to deal with the limitations of sound and lighting in the Hall. Even though there's been great improvements and that's helpful, they still have some challenges because of, they're an orchestra, they're, they're on the floor and they're not up on the stage. So it's a different setting compared to a rock and, you know, rock musicians and classical music. So I think that, you know, my hope is that we can entertain these concepts. I've had a chance to engage other communities that have similar facilities like Memorial Hall here in Plymouth and I think we should do, we should also reach out to those communities. You know, New Bedford has the Z.
Yes.
Worcester has the Mechanics Hall.
Yeah.
There are other facilities around the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I found that they had, you know, an Edison residence and, and they had a specific agreement with them that not only addressed the costs that were associated for them performing at that location, but their larger community support that they provide.
Yes, sir.
So I think that we're at a point that it would be nice if we could think about a way of getting staff in the town together with representatives of the Phil and kind of think out this process.
Yep. And just to, you addressed about the sound and lighting. We invested probably close to $10,000 worth of lighting last season for the Phil so, because they no longer had their sound, their lighting person. So we invested that, that we don't charge them for. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with Yamaha, the company that installed our sound system, to specifically talk about what we can add so that the Phil doesn't have to pay Berxton to come in anymore. So we're trying to.
Yeah, that's a very good point, because I think as we reach out about lighting and sound improvements, because of the unique circumstance of the Phil, we should be engaging them about their needs. What kind of lighting and sound are you looking for? So as we start to talk to Yamaha and others, we should be doing that in partnership with the Phil to make sure that the alterations are accommodating some of their concerns. Obviously, that's another thing. But it's, it's good to know that the town is thinking about looking at the year 2021, post-pandemic, showing us these numbers. That's great. But I do have a concern about 2000, 1999 through 2020, this period of time when we were running the Hall, what money was coming in and what money was being committed to capital improvements for the building in terms of the water being tight to the weather, the repointing, the electrical, these things. You know, different people are using the building. We're raising the revenue to address the costs. But I think in the other, other factors on this is that, you know, the town does pay money at town meeting. We, you know, Lynn Barrett was here and she did talk about the amount of money that the town has to commit on top of the revenue coming in from the Hall. And I would like to see some more numbers that Mr. Gold, Golden has indicated to see what the, the breakdown of the numbers that are, are generating for the town, especially when it comes to the rec programs. Obviously, you pointed out the rec programs are operating in the building.
Yeah.
But they're charging for those activities. How much of the percentage of those, that, that income is going back into capital improvements? We've got to really start to think about when we're operating over there, not only the salaries and the day-to-day operation, but putting something away for the future, capital improvements for the building. So as you start to embark on this, this plan, I, I, I hope that plays a major role in the, in the, in the thought process.
Mr. Brindisi?
So that's a great segue to the second half of this presentation. And so I apologize for the confusion in the first half, but that's the direction we're looking for. So if you are confused, can you imagine how confused we are when we hear conversations around having half the business plan, but then the second conversation is around, you know, providing special fee structures for certain groups of individuals? Those two conversations, they conflict with one another. So we hear you. We will work with the Phil now that we know that you want them to have some type of Edison in residence type of program. You set the fee structure, we don't, so we can work with them. We'll come back with a revised fee structure. But that was the first part of the conversation. I want to get to the second part of the conversation, because I agree with Mr. Cohen. We got, and I say we, this administration got left with an arbitrage of a building that has been neglected for 20-plus years. Casey, can you turn the video on this? There should be a, if you scroll over the picture, there should be a play button at the very left-hand corner. So these are the existing conditions of the building. And so again, this part of the presentation is to continue to get guidance. We went to, to the select board over a year ago. We explained what was happening at Memorial Hall, how it's been neglected for decades. And the board voted to appropriate a sum of money through APA to hire an engineering firm to come in there to help us look at what's going on in the building and what it's going to cost to bring this back, this building back to the original state. So I just want to give a little history of the water intrusion problem, because again, it's not gone away. We went to CPC, we asked for $15 million so that again, we could renovate this building. But in 2011, the town hired this company, CME Associates, to do a water infiltration analysis at a cost of $18,000. You can see this, what they found in their analysis. And they had a proposed in 2012, a repair cost of $33,000. That was, you know, I can't see that far, but, you know, replacing some of the shingles, some brick repointing, things of that nature. Then 2016, after, four years later, after they had this recommendation, they went and they asked town meeting to appropriate a sum of money of $86,000 to do that work that was identified in 2011, so five years later. So town meeting appropriated $86,000. That money is still sitting in an account. It's never been spent. So here we are, 2011, we identified water infiltration problems. Five years later, we asked for money and nine years after that, money still hasn't been spent on this problem. So as I pointed out, in 2024, we asked for money so that we could hire SGH, so they can do a structural investigation and then a water intrusion investigation. They came back and said what we already knew, that we had to repair the facade and the envelope of the building at a cost of $3.1 million. We also hired DBVW. They did the feasibility study. They recommended a similar cost of $3.8 million. To, again, this was, this was the tier one recommendation that we went to CPC for. This is just the building envelope recommendation. I'm bringing this up tonight because we haven't made any decisions. We have this similar problems. Jason Silva, the building commissioner, sat in this room at this podium back in June and said, he can't guarantee that this building is going to continue to stay open. Warrant closes on December 17th and so we need to get some direction as to what we're doing with this building moving forward. I know that town meeting appropriated $90,000 for historical analysis, but this goes beyond historical analysis. So we have $86,000 or thereabouts that we could use tomorrow if the board decides that they want to use that money. So based upon the, the urgent repairs in order to keep water out of the building, we could go ahead and just focus on the foundation. That would, to install a foundation drain and perma membrane along the foundation, we believe that that would keep the, that would keep the subsurface water out of the building that's penetrating the building through the foundation. That's a cost of $60,000. However, the water intrusion doesn't just begin and end with the foundation, it's coming through the east wall and it's also coming through the north wall. In fact, I was just met with staff this past week and found out that the water penetrating the building through the east wall is actually during a heavy rain event, it's getting on the stage. So it's not just coming down the side of the wall, it's getting on the stage as well. So based upon the analysis, in order to repair the east wall, it's $275,000. And then north wall, which is where the utility room is, is another $350,000. The facilities department has already met with a local electrician who believes that the electrical panel is in very good condition. However, the grounding should be repaired and the grounding, we would repair the grounding if we were to do the foundation work. So in total, just to get, keep the water out of the east side of the building and the north side of the building, we're looking at approximately $750,000. Again, we have $86,000 that we could use tomorrow. And so that's question one. And then the second part of this presentation is we went back and we looked at the, it ultimately was a $22 million request. We were asking CPC to fund $50 million for the $22 million request. It was, it was based upon the DBVW study. It was the tier one recommendation, tier one A and the tier one B recommendation. That was a total of $22 million. So we said, let's pair that back. And what do we need to do just to get this, the building envelope and the, and the, and the safety issues remedied right away? And so we ordered them by priority. So priority number one is approximately a $4 million request. Again, these are our preliminary cost estimates. There's been no design. This is all coming out of the feasibility study by DBVW. So if we were to go to town meeting and ask for $4 million, we could accomplish priority number one. An additional $5.5 million or thereabouts would remedy the HVA system and any safety system upgrades, like the fire alarm system, for example. And then the last priority is really important, because if you've been in the green room, you can see what such disrepair that space is, that we are also putting that as priority number three for $500,000 as well. So we believe approximately a total cost of $10 million, we could handle the top three areas that need to be addressed. It does not cover the concession upgrades, it does not cover the seat upgrades, it does not cover the lighting upgrades or any electrical improvements. This is just kind of bare bones of things that we need to do to keep the building envelope safe and any minor upgrades to the, to the interior at $10 million. And so before I end for questions, I just want you to, because again, this is something I've heard, is that we don't know what the future outcome of this building is going to be. And so I'm a member of the Economic Development Foundation, so is Lee Hartman. We've been working with the foundation on their goals for this year. One of the goals the foundation has identified is working with the town to help us explore the future of Memorial Hall. So a couple of things we've already started to do is we've already started to visit other venues across New England. We've already, we've already gone to Portsmouth, we've met with the managers of the Music Hall, we've looked at their facility, we've looked at their business plan, we've taken back a lot of great information. One key takeaway was, don't put the addition on the back of the building to expand your stage, because the only purpose to do that is for Broadway. And they said, you will never get Broadway in the town of Plymouth. They said, you are competing with Boston, they're only able to get two Broadway shows per year. So they said, investing $10 million into the stage is not worth Broadway. So that's just some of the take, some of the feedback we're getting by having these conversations. And then the other piece to all this is we're looking at the business plan. So how are they making this work? What are they doing for fundraising? Are they working with their local municipality? In the case of the music hall, they're not working with the municipality. Everything is 100% funded through capital campaigns. And then ultimately, what we want to do is we want to come back to the select board, CPC Finance Committee, and develop a set of recommendations. It could be anything from, do we remodel it at $22 million? Do we just sell the building to private equity group and let them figure out the future of entertainment in downtown Plymouth? Or as brought up in the past, because folks want to know their numbers, what would it cost to demolish the building and then rebuild the building? And what does that, and what would that look like? You know, is that, is that public dollars to do something like that? And if that's the case, then we have to go to the ballot in May? Or do, again, do we sell the building, let a private equity firm demolish the building and let them rebuild it at their cost, which certainly would be much cheaper? So in, in part of all doing that, the foundation, I believe at their next meeting, they are going to appropriate a sum of money so that we can hire a consultant to help us flush all these details out. So it's a lot of information and honestly, we're, we meet on a regular basis on this and we're struggling on where to go with this, because do we answer this question first before we answer the previous slide, right? The $10 million request or the $22 million request? And if that, if the answer to that is yes, let's, let us pursue the analysis, let us do the research and come back with a set of recommendations for consideration. We're talking probably six to seven months away from that. So in order to even have a conversation, town meeting, we're talking fall of 2026. But what does that mean to, to the building from October of '25 to October of '26? And Jason Silva said, he can't guarantee that this building is going to continue to stay open, given the current state it's in. And so it's important to have those conversations publicly, because the last thing I want is then, is that something happens in December, we have a norista and we have to shut the building down and the Philharmonic has to find a new location, just using them as an example. Because we know that'll upset the community if that were to happen. So that's my presentation for this evening, looking for feedback so that we can get a better pathway moving forward.
Mr. Canty?
So I think for me personally, as well as I think for town meeting, to get it through town meeting, we need, I think we need to know what we want Memorial Hall to be before we start funding repairs or remodeling or reconstruction of it. I personally think that the idea of having the fill as an artist in residence or a house orchestra or whatever you want to call them, are very special friends, and, and trying to build a business model that utilizes them as part of the marketing and trying to make the hall into a place that is attracting primarily musical acts and other stage acts would be a place to start. And then what does the hall need to look like to accomplish that? Can the current hall be remodeled to do that successfully or, and cost effectively? Or would it make more sense to tear down in whole or in part and rebuild it to meet the needs of the community to accomplish its, its current goals? I understand that it is a historic structure in, in some regards. It's 100 years old, so it's not one of our oldest buildings or anything. And I, and I understand that it has, the Memorial Hall component of it is a memorial to veterans, which we could maintain if we did tear the building down, we could maintain it somewhere in like the atrium in the meantime, and then incorporate it into the new design when we complete it, whatever, whether it's a restoration or a rebuild. But I do not think, I, I think too, if you know what you want the building to be, that informs your funding source. Because if we're redoing much of the building, historic preservation funds may not be available for much of the, the funding source. So I, I don't see a scenario in which we can answer, we can do the rebuild and reconstruction before we know what we ultimately want it to be. So that would be what I would request. If there's things that we need to do in the near term to prevent it from being a catastrophic failure in the meantime, we could have a conversation about that before the warrant closes. I know it's been 14 years of consistent water intrusion, which is not great, but the sooner we could stop that bleeding, so to speak, the better perhaps. But I, I don't think town meeting is going to sign off on any significant dollar figure without a, a, a conversation and a, and a clear plan of what this venue is actually going to be. And that, if you have that clear plan, it's a lot easier to get the funding. Because you say, we want to, we want to attract mid-tier musical acts. We want to attract B-list stand-up comedians. We want to do this, that, and the other thing. We can, we could say that, we could put that in part of the plan, then you're, you're justifying the return on the investment, whether that's taxpayers, CPC money, grant money, other funding sources. But if you don't have that piece, then it's just, let's just fix it and figure it out later for millions of dollars. I, I just don't think town meeting is going to support that, and I can't see myself supporting that either.
And honestly, I'm, I just want to be very clear about this conversation. We aren't recommending we spend $10 million in April.
I understand.
We're, we're saying, these are the options.
I understand.
You set the policy, you let us know
Right.
the direction you want us to move in, and we're going to pivot in that direction.
I understand, and I, I wasn't suggesting, just, I know you're presenting the options to us. But I think the only way to do it successfully, both for the long-term sustainability of the building and to get it funded by the legislature
Sure.
is to do a version of what I just articulated.
Sure.
Maybe reasonable minds could differ on whether the fills should be part of that conversation. I think they should, I think that's, that makes sense. And it could be a, as I said earlier, a part of the marketing strategy for it. But I, without having concrete knowledge of what we want Memorial Hall to be after we spend the money, it's going to be essentially impossible to get that money. To be clear though, you are asking us, you are recommending that we spend $753,000, right?
I'm putting it on the table, is that something that would be palatable? Because the warrant's going to close and there's, we have these debates on the fourth floor on a regular basis. There are some that think we should go ahead and ask for $4 million. There are others that think, let's just do the bare minimum. But even if the bare minimum is $750,000, is, is that too much to invest in a building that we don't know its future?
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel hamstrung by this conversation here tonight, and I think town meeting will too. I think if we're, if we go to them and say, we're going to spend $753,500
Sure.
and then we come back to them six or 12 months later and say, actually, guess what? We're going to tear the building down and rebuild, as Mr. Canty said
Sure.
as an option, I think they're going to be pretty upset with us.
Right.
So I think we need to have a clear path forward before we decide what we're going to put on the warrant.
I think too, we need to know what the absolute minimum, is, is it $753,000? Or is there a smaller amount to hold it over in the temporary, to stop the worst of the issues?
This, this number, this slide right here is what, after doing the analysis, working with facilities director, working with Mr. Coyle, those are the options to do the bare minimum. To stop water intrusion through the east and north wall, those are the costs. To stop water intrusion through the foundation, $60,000. We could do the foundation tomorrow, because like I said, we have $83,000 already in old article dating back to 2016. We could stop that work in the next couple of weeks.
So, but I guess part of that would be, part of that conversation would be, what is the, so that's the cost to do it. What would be the cost of not doing it between now and next fall? And then without knowing what the ultimate fate of the building is going to be yet? And then is it worth making that pitch in the spring for the $753,000? Because if, if we can ju, if we can make a, a case that we don't know for sure that this building is going to be maintained, but the cost of doing nothing will be so exponentially higher that we want to maintain that option open, and we can, we can give that to town meeting and make a case for it, that's one thing. But if it, if it's very speculative, then I don't think that town meeting is going to support that.
And, and I, you know, I, I totally agree. I, I, what I am trying to defend against is that the building gets closed. And how do we respond to those complaints, especially from our local businesses, when they say that 50% of their revenue, their, their revenue increases by 50% on night of an event? And because we didn't take any action, the building's closed for a period of time?
Yes, I would prefer to avoid that as well. However, we are in the situation we are in.
That's right.
We inherited this, and now we have to grapple with it one way or the other. And if we're, whatever we do, we need to pass it through 162 town meeting members. And I think on this board, at least at certain points, there's been five different opinions about what should happen at Memorial Hall. And there very well may have been last Saturday, 162 different opinions about what they want to see done at Memorial Hall. So clarity, I think, is necessary to get people behind any of these options. So for, for this 753, I think we need to know, like I said, the, the risk of doing nothing? How likely is it that between, if we do nothing, between now and fall town meeting of next year, that the building will close for any amount of time? And, and then some type of a commitment, I would think is part of that component of, we will have this business plan, this is what we're doing with it so far, we're looking into it so that we can have that be part of the conversation. And then when we make the ultimate pitch for whatever the al, the end result is, then we need a very clear business plan and intended use of the venue to justify a much higher expense at that time, whatever that may be.
Ms. Ayquinto?
Derek, how much time would that 753 buy us?
Well, it would stop the water intrusion. The water intrusion right now, when I speak to the fire chief and when I speak to the building commissioner, that's their number one concern, because they're worried about what the water will do to the electrical systems. And they, they both feel that that is the biggest threat to anyone in that building. When there's, and that's why I showed you the water intrusion. Right now, the water is coming through the walls, we see that coming through the walls. We've done what we could so far, as far as mitigating the water and keeping people away from, from the electrical area. We've had it, like I said earlier, we had an electrician go there who says the panel is in really good condition, so that's, that's good news, but we certainly do want to take care of the grounding. So, so that's the biggest concern. It's water and electricity getting in contact with one another.
What I'm thinking is, even if we know, you know, by fall town meeting, what our business plan is for the future of Memorial Hall, we're not going to knock it down the next day. It's going to take a while to flush things out, so it could be a couple of years before we even, you know, begin the work of remodeling, tearing it down, whatever. So if our goal is to keep the doors open for another two to three years, then you could justify an investment like this. Do you, does that make sense?
So I'm just thinking like- I believe, right now, from the data that's been given to me and to Mr. Coyle, that this work keeps the doors open.
And, and so I think that's the way we would position it, and I, I would buy into that. You know, even knowing that the, the hall would be, may not be, exist in its current form five years from now. But if we can buy another five years, another five years of economic development downtown, you know, keep it, keep it open, keep the businesses thriving that, that depend on it, have an orchestra in residence or whatever we want to call it, you know, make some other tweaks and maybe be able to attract some different kinds of artists to it. You know, just, just to keep it going until we know what the future, you know, we've decided and we have a path forward, we have the funding and we, you know, we're ready to go with the new Memorial Hall. I think that could be a, an important selling point when, you know, when we talk about making this kind of investment in a hall that, where the future is unclear.
Okay. I'm going to go to Mr. Quintal, then Mr. Cohen, and then back to Mr. Canty.
Yes, I like Deb's idea exactly. I know it's a lot of money and water damages, I don't have to tell everybody, there's probably nothing worse than we have a building than that. We all know it was neglected, so either we can kick the can a little longer. You know, you know, town meeting, they all have minds, you know? If you lay it out like it is, what happens to Joe Goldberg with shows he has? If it shuts down, what happens? You know, everybody loses. You know, will this buy us enough time like Deb was going for three, five years? I mean, at least if we knew that, we could at least do this. And then, you know, when I say we, I mean, I hope we do it. The very building we're sitting in, I think, was 41 million, something like that, without the parking deck. And the PGDC took the whole bank account to bill that for the town. So in case anybody didn't know that. And we have an obligation. Drive down this street, if you will, it's history. That's what we're talking about, seriously. And I'm not no history guy, Bill will tell you, he's way more on the history than I am. But when I drive down here, I'm proud, when I look up the hill and I see this, Memorial Street or the Spire Center or Town Square, I mean, those are the things that are going to matter when we're all gone. So I, I don't think we, you know, it's going to be a lot of money to fix it. It is, it's going to be, no matter what building you remodel. But when you're dealing with something that old, it's going to be more. So I'm not ready to take the backhoe to it. I think we need to make a plan. And you know, if it buys us, that's what I really would like to know. Will this buy us, you know, five years? You know, so we can keep the process going, educate everybody, get a business plan and present something that's, everybody's going to want to buy in on. And maybe they won't, but at least I did my job. I, I'm not going to put it on town meeting. I always look at it as, you know, you were elected here to make a decision. Not everybody's going to like it, right? Not everybody's not going to like it, some are going to like it. But I'm going to do my job, make my decision, and then you know what? It leaves my desk, it goes to town meeting. I don't need to go out there and, and hustle everybody to, to support this or that. That's their job. I've done my job, he's doing his job. He's telling us, these are your options, no disrespect. Mr. Brindisi is telling us, these are our options. So you know what? Let's make a decision. That's what we get elected for. These people, we got to come back, we got to come back, we got to come back. I mean, half of yous wouldn't go back for Dunkin' Donuts that many times if they told you, come back. You know, I mean, sometimes you need more information. This isn't going away, this isn't getting any better. Let's make a decision, direct management in what to do. And yes, they can come back, but they don't need to come back and tell us what we already know. That's my opinion.
I'd tend to lean towards what Mr. Quintal is indicating and Ms. Ayquinto, excuse me, Ayquinto and Dicky Quintal, both indicating something that I'm gravitating to, and that is living within our means, addressing an issue sooner rather than later. You know, we have a norista coming into town in two days. We have a building that has water issues that is paramount. Obviously, we want to set up a scenario where we can have an adequate discussion about the future of the building. The town has already compiled enough information. The Economic Development Foundation is looking at further studies. Town meeting has authorized the expenditure of the historical structures report. This information is coming in and it's going to guide us in the future in the building. But obviously, Mr. Silver in Inspection Services is indicating that he might have to close the building down if, if these repairs aren't done. So I think it's pretty straightforward what we have to do, and that we have to look at this $750,000 cost to stabilize the building when it comes to water getting in the building and the electrical panels, living within our means. If you look at the $86,000 that we already have earmarked for the building, and you minus that, you're coming up with $67,000. Is that where you, you know, you do have $86,000 set aside.
Already, right.
Yeah, so if you took the $86,000 and minus the 753, you're coming up with 60, 667,000. And I believe that there was a presentation done at one point that showed us what you had in a, it was an amount of money in the capital improvement account at Memorial Hall right- at Memorial Hall right now that we have. We do have money, uh, that has been coming in. It's not all gone to, uh, the general operation of the building. There was, uh, at one point, you showed us a pie chart there.
Right. We had, in the $22 million ask, 15 was coming from CPC, 5 was gonna come from free cash.
Yeah.
And we were gonna make up the balance of the 2 million in various ways. Grants was one, and then there was, we were gonna propose to use $5 million from the Memorial Hall revolving account.
So in, so-
500,000, did I say?
Yeah.
500,000.
500,000. So you have 500,000 in the Memorial Hall revolving fund.
Right.
And you have $86,000 already set by town meeting in 2011 and 16. So you have $586,000 right now.
With the 86,000 dollars that we can use right away.
So we could get this number down and, and make the urgent necessary repairs with the money that we do have. So, uh, if we do the quick math on that, it's, you know, it's a couple hundred thousand that we would be asking town meeting to go with the revolving fund money and the money that's already been set aside. Then that brings that number down to 100 and, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So that might be a more palatable way to address this issue, because we'd have to go to fall town meeting and do the warrants closing in a week, uh, in December.
Now, this would go to the, to the April town meeting, this request.
So the warrant closes on-
December 17th.
Sep, December 17th. So we could theoretically send an article to Ted, December 17th to make up the difference.
Right.
So I, you know, I'm gravitating, I'd like to hear what my other board members think, but Deb and Dicky are gravitating towards this idea of these necessary repairs as we do our long-term planning. I think this is living within our means in that direction.
Uh, so a couple things. The, the $1 per ticket fee that's being assessed, what is that bringing in presently?
Joe, so that began July 1st, so I'd have to get the newest numbers.
As of right now, the, we, that number has come around $3,000. So we brought in, it came into effect the last couple of months because shows have been grandfathered. Um, that was come in after they've already been booked. So we've raised about $3,000 in the last two months.
And so is it a dollar per ticket?
Yes.
Per event? And do you have, like, the last full year of operations, how many total tickets did you sell on, on app, like, rough?
Yep. On average, we had about 1,000 people, 1,000 to 1,100 people attend a show, and we did roughly about 120 shows. So that brings in about, what, $132,000?
So you, okay. So you, so if you, if it were 1,000 per show and there were 120 shows, it'd be 120,000, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, okay. And then the, the Memorial Hall revolving fund, what is that currently being used for?
Uh, right now, we use that money to be reinvested back into the hall. As we talked about earlier, putting in an upgraded sound, adding to our sound system so that the Philharmonic wouldn't have to pay to bring it in. That's what that money goes to. So out of that 500,000, we were gonna dedicate.
Okay.
Part of that money would be going towards things like adding the sound system so the Phil wouldn't have to pay to bring it in.
And how is that money in the revolving fund? Is that, it must be from other sources because it predates this fee, but does this fee go into that account as well?
No, it's a totally separate account.
So what, what is, where does the money come from that goes into the Memorial Hall revolving fund?
Yep. That, we do that through rentals and concession sales.
Okay.
It's, it's the net revenues.
Okay, so that's, it's basically like retained earnings if it were an enterprise fund? Okay. So if, what if we, if we use that 500 and we, then we, we need to make, close a gap of, with the 86, we need to close a gap of like 170,000 dollars, thereabouts? So if we increase the fee from a dollar a ticket to four, $5 a ticket, then you could backfill the, the money you're taking out of the revolving fund account over time while the building is still open. A five, a, a fee increase from a dollar to, to $5, a $4 increase is an increased fee, but it, I would say would largely not be a large enough fee to dissuade people from coming, at least to most of these events, I would think. Is that something that we, because then we could justify, even if it is a temporary thing that if we do tear the building down, at least it's being replenished by the people utilizing the structure while it's still operating in its current form. Is that something that we could do?
It is something we could do and you can vote on. The issue becomes with the promoter and the artist. Those things are all negotiated, so all the fees have to be very transparent.
Mm-hmm.
For us to even act that $1 fee, it took us probably eight months for us to negotiate with artists to say, hey, this is what we're doing. The promoter would then have to go to the artist and get them to agree upon it. Because the, the promoter, I'm sorry, the artist wants to kinda keep their ticket expenses down to their client base as well.
Okay.
Because that reflects people who go to the shows.
And what is the projected additional lifespan the building would secure if we did the $753,000 and nothing else?
I don't know if we can answer that. Bill, what do you think? I mean, if we were able to just implement these three items, how many, how many more years do you think we can get out of the building?
Well, I think the, the goal would be these, these three items are just controlling the water in the primary area where we have water issues.
Right.
What we're told is that with the foundation drain, even sealing the brick, there is the potential of some water intrusion still existing.
Sure.
But not to the point of what the problem is today. So it might eliminate, let's say, 90%. I'm just estimating.
I understand.
So, um, looking down the road, you could look at putting gutters on the interior of the building. So if you tear the wall out.
Yeah.
Along the foundation, you put a concrete gutter. So if there's any limited amount of water that continues at a later date, it would get collected in that area, and pitch that to a sump pump and it drains out. That's if we move forward with other projects. This solves the immediate need to minimize the water intrusion in particular. I think that foundation drain, if we move forward with that, you know, Rick Bossi drew up a plan. Uh, we've already, um, engaged, uh, dig it to give us a, an estimate for the work. We would like to get them in there to do that work before the winter, in addition to a sump pump in the green room. That would control a lot of the water that gets in there. It won't control the water intrusion through the wall.
Mm-hmm.
That's still gonna happen. But we, if we can get the water, you saw the picture of standing water on the floor, we're trying to minimize that. Again, not knowing how much of its water intrusion through the wall, can't, can't guarantee it, but I think it's a right, good step in the, uh, you know, in the right direction. I, I can't say how long. Five years, I would hope you'd get five years. Uh, there are other areas in the building we get a trickle of water, but nothing to this extent. So.
Okay.
There's no reason why this wouldn't last five, because again, our recommendation that we sealed this building every five to 10 years, and because we're a coastal community, it should probably be sealed every five years.
Okay.
So I think five years is a safe number.
Okay.
Sorry for the lengthy answer.
No, I appreciate the thoroughness. So, uh, when, in, in regards to, since the contract negotiations for the fee takes some lead time, if we did want to increase that fee to say $5 instead of $1 to backfill the account that we'd be draining, uh, just in case we do end up tearing down the building, at least the people that are benefiting from the venue still being open are paying for it to remain open during that time. And in the event that we maintain the building long-term, it paid for itself and off, and offsets the total cost of the project. But when do we, is that something we couldn't implement until, like, July 1st, effective of July 1st of next year? Or could we do it sooner than that?
We could do it sooner, but all the shows that we already have presently secured on the calendar would have to be grandfathered.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. So that would be what I would propose, is that we increase the fee from a dollar to five, uh, so that the people that are gonna benefit from it being open are helping to subsidize its, this, and make up that gap in backfilling the 500,000. And then we've, then we've created a justification for doing this while we're still figuring out the bigger, the bigger picture, longer term.
Mr. Quintal?
I was looking at Bill's calculator over here, and he had some numbers. So if you take the 83.5 times 2, comes up what we're short. Um, is there any way of maybe reaching out to the foundation and the PGDC and see if they'd be willing to help us with that? Then we would have this solved.
We can always ask.
You know?
I know the foundation has a meeting in a couple of weeks, PGDC, we can always meet with Desmond, see what he thinks.
I mean, because part of their mission, the PGDC, I only know because I sat on it for so long, is economic development and reinvested in the community. So, I mean, I think we should get a feel from them, and then we wouldn't have, you know, we can move along.
Mr. Cohen?
I like that better than the $5. But the $5, I understand where it's coming from. I mean, people use, it's a user fee.
Right.
For many years, uh, during the application process of working with the Center for the Arts and in the Spire Theater, the CPC would always say, we'd like to see you commit a dollar of ticket sales, uh, to a revolving fund to take care of the capital improvements because we don't want to see you back in front of the CPC 10 years from now looking for this money. So I'm glad that town is adopting that policy that we would present to town meeting, uh, that dollar ticket fee. But your tickets are getting pretty high. When you get into the $5 fee, it's, that's to push it into an area where you might lose ticket sales. And if, uh, the PGDC and the, uh, foundation, uh, wanted to split the costs of the remaining 167,000, it would be about 85,000, uh, 85,500 each.
Or the VSB.
Yeah, the VSB. So, you know, we could find other ways rather than the pushing those ticket sales up.
It would, but then that, that wouldn't replenish the 500,000 you're taking out of the revolving fund.
Oh, yeah, true, true.
So the five, the five would, over time, if we're getting several years out of it, would replenish all the money that's being spent on this and then some.
Right.
If it's gonna be open for three to five years based on this investment.
Well, if we're, if, if the fee's at a dollar already and, and your calculation was 120,000, wouldn't over the five-year span, we replenish just using this, the $1?
If, if, if it's open for all five years and this rate of return remains consistent, yes. But then we wouldn't be, the adoption of the fee back in July of this year would not make any forward progress.
Yeah.
So if we made the five, we'd, that could be, we'd be putting money towards the, whatever eventual rehab or reconstruction we're doing as well.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily opposed to adding a fee, or increasing the fee. I think doing a, a 500% increase in, at once is a big ask. You know, maybe we need to look at, um, what those, what that number is. But I, I believe the town manager is gesturing to me that he'd like to invite up our representatives.
I was speaking to the chairman of VSB, and, uh, he had a great recommendation that maybe at least $100,000 of the 160 we still have to come up with could come from VSB, which January, the applications open up, and, you know, I think that would make sense. And back to Mr. Quintal's point, maybe we could, um, talk to PGDC and the foundation. Maybe they'll split the baby of the $60,000 that's remaining.
Is, uh, do the, will the applications be, um, decided on by the time we have April town meeting?
Excellent. It sounds like we have a wonderful path forward.
You need a motion? To go ahead or just direction? Okay.
Well, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that, I mean, we don't necessarily would have to go to town meeting if we're able to fundraise with everything we discussed.
Okay.
We wouldn't have to go to town meeting and ask for anything. If we fall short, PGDC and the foundation, I mean, the foundation's gonna be a tough ask because they're already paying for the consultant. You know, that could technically be up to, that could be a six-figure ask already. You know, so I, you know, I'm hesitant on that one, but, you know, maybe PGDC. And I know they have a few plans in place. I actually think I'm meeting with them on Monday. So, um, yeah, I can ask them on Monday.
Would you feel more comfortable if we had a, um, a motion to place this on the spring town meeting warrant, uh, subject to any additional funding that we find?
I don't think we have enough.
I think, if, if we have to come back for an article for town meeting, I, we'll come back before December 17th.
Okay.
And have that conversation. Um, if you're gonna increase the $1 fee, yes, I would be looking for a motion.
Okay. Is that something that would go?
Only you can set the rate, so that's, that's why I would need a motion.
Is that something that the board wants to do tonight?
I think we should, I'm, if we don't want to do it to five, I, I don't think 1 to 5, I know it's 500%, but it's, it's not a large dollar increase per ticket. Um, and it does fully, over a very, a relatively short period of time, fully reimburses this total project cost and starts chipping away at future capital needs of the building, which we know are extensive. So I, I would think, I, I would suggest that we increase it to five when we're, as soon as we're able to do, to make that effective.
I, I say we go with the plan that we have right now and then look at adjusting ticket prices. I mean, it's very unfair to do that to somebody that already has bookings and so. I, I, I think you all talk about you need to have more discussion. I think that idea needs to have a lot more discussion to see what it involves.
I just confirm with Joe. I think that it probably best to table that discussion. It would take us eight to nine months anyways to implement it. Um, I think the best thing to do is have conversations with our entertainment management companies to see what's palatable. Uh, Joe was just saying $5. He said we may even lose spectacle management if we went up that quickly. You know, so maybe there's an incremental increase we could do. So, but, you know, if, if, if we, if we have $86,000 and, um, I'm a little nervous about the revolving account, a half a million dollars, because that would totally wipe that account out.
Right.
So maybe we will have to come back and ask for a smaller sum of money for the April town meeting. But let us crunch the numbers and we can come back and make a recommendation.
I'd really love to see the numbers.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess the takeaway from this, we all agree that let's keep the doors open at a cost of $750,000. How we arrive at 750 still remains to be seen.
Mr. Cohen?
Just to, you know, I, I think we have to move forward, you know, if we're gonna increase the dollar ticket fee, we need to consult with the staff that's interacting with the management companies to make sure that we're not getting ahead of ourselves. But at the same time, when we start to have these future discussions, you know, I really want to start to look at what's coming in and how much money we're dedicating, uh, to a revolving fund in the future, a percentage. Uh, I know the Spire Center and the Center for the Arts, we have agreements where they have to put a certain percentage of their annual income into the revolving fund, that they're not, uh, missing that mark. Uh, so I know you are concerned about the revolving fund, but the revolving fund is money's in there to do capital improvements, and this is the one that gets us to a point to have a larger discussion.
Right.
I know it would be nice to always have that revolving fund when we go back to town meeting, but we are gonna be asking for a substantial amount of money based on some of the earlier indications. So, uh, I think right now, the best thing to do is to utilize that money to stabilize the building.
You've sold me.
Ms. Ayquinto?
Yeah, just one more. I just want to clarify. So when, you're gonna come back to us with some, some numbers, right? You're gonna crunch some numbers, come back to us with that?
Well, we're gonna crunch numbers as far as how we're gonna raise $750,000.
Okay. So, but then you'll come back to us with that?
Yes.
Okay. Will you?
Well, I guess I would say we would come back, if we, if, if there's still a balance that we have to go to the April town meeting for, yes. But if we can raise it through private fundraising, the, the revolving account, existing articles, what I'm hearing tonight is that you want us to pursue these repairs.
Yeah, the only thing I would caveat that with is just to clarify and confirm that this would keep the doors open for longer than a year.
Yeah, agree.
Because we talked about, I think, um, you said maybe a five-year runway that we would have. That would be awesome. Um, but just to, you know, if there's any question about whether that's reality, we should probably just understand, you know, how realistic that is. So, so we would have five years to make a decision to move forward, to start a new Memorial Hall project. Okay? All right, I'm good with that.
So just, just one more. I just want to go back to something Mr. Canty brought up 30 minutes ago. Um, so when we engage the consultant, I think what I'm hearing is we need to set what we want Memorial Hall to be, right? The, the types of programs we want Memorial Hall to offer.
Yes.
So I think that's task number one for the consultant, right? But that's a community engaged process. You know, that's not just the five of us in this room. So is that a fair statement to say that we need to engage our, uh, business owners, we need to engage our residents on what their expectation is, whether it's Memorial Hall or something to replace Memorial Hall, what they want to see come out of that building?
Yeah, I think it's also market analysis. Like what, what would, because if, if we, if, say we wanted to make it a, a music entertainment venue, but if that's not, if the market wouldn't sustain that, because there was community interest in a, in a conference center, but then the market couldn't sustain that.
Right.
So there needs to be a market-based reality.
Agreed. Like, like my, my example of Broadway, right?
Yes.
You know, speaking to the experts in Porsche, they said, don't spend $10 million because-
Right.
The market's not gonna- "The market's not going to allow it."
Right, so even if all sixty-five thousand Plymouthians are pounding on the fourth floor saying they want Broadway shows, it's not going to happen.
Yep, agreed.
So, just, yeah.
Yep, no, you're right, yep. Okay.
I just have to ask the question, do you have to seal this building?
Seal this one here?
Mm-hmm, the bricks?
It's bricks, so I assume at some point in the future, yeah, we would have to.
Because it's been, what, twenty years?
Uh, no, we're, um, we're moving on ten years. Oh, sorry. Uh, no, I, I think we, we mentioned this last week about, um, the possibilities of starting to open up a discussion about the eighteen-twenty courthouse and its condition and, and some of the preventative maintenance thing, plans that we should be going into, because now we're moving into nine years. So, we'll be at nine years, so, that's something that we have to put on the radar.
Well, it is on the radar and I, you brought it up on the new business last week and the facilities director is already working on a plan to repaint the cupola and we've already had, so I've been here four years and I've seen at least on two occasions, two different separate summers, roof is up there replacing the sliding slate roof.
Yeah, yeah. It was, it was explained to us when it was installed that it should be looked at every spring, uh, someone should go and inspect it because you want to make sure, uh, if you stop one from sliding, it's like, uh, you can stop others, because if you neglect the roof and one slides, it's like teeth, you know, they all start moving. So, you want to be careful on your slate roof because it could, uh, it could cost you money if you're not maintaining it, but if it, it's well-maintained, it will save money.
We've strayed from Memorial Hall. Uh, I think this building, uh, could take us another hour if we decide to go down this conversation.
Totally.
I think we, in the interest of time, it's, uh, best that we move on. Thank you, Mr. Brindisi.
Uh, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Goldberg and, and everyone else who contributed. Uh, the last item on our agenda proper is, uh, the electric bicycle draft regulations. Uh, Mr. Canty asked that we have two bites at the apple on this, so this will be the first bite. Ms. McKay?
Do you remember I was before you on October fourteenth, we reviewed the draft legislation that I had, uh, give it to you guys?
Oh, you, Mike. Green light.
Oh, uh, okay. So, uh, when I was before you on the fourteenth of October, there was a first draft of legislation presented and there were, there was feedback given, suggestions, questions asked, so this is, as, uh, the chair indicated, I guess the first bite at the apple, because there'll be another one after this. Some of those suggestions have been made and incorporated and I'll just jump right into it, given the hour. Um, you can see on page one, in the top half, there is a definitions section that was added and that was in response, I think, to Mr. Canty's feedback. There is a notation at the end of that section indicating that this definition will not include electric scooters, which are already regulated pursuant to MGL Chapter ninety, Section one E, just for clarification. Um, under that, in Section two, I would say that's the part that has been, that has undergone the, the most editing. A, B, and C, as you see them on the page, are about registration, so, A is some updated registration language, B is also updated registration language in terms of the application, and C is contemplating a fee for the registration of the electric bicycle. When you go over to page two, which is, should be on the back, um, the top subsection D is in response to Chairman Golden's, uh, comment to kind of more clearly delineate or break out the age requirements that we were going to impose, um, so that is intended to clarify that you are eighteen or sixteen and a half and having a valid license, and it clarifies in the beginning of that, no one under the age of sixteen and a half would be permitted to operate, so that was intended to kind of delineate that a little bit more. Um, in Section E, as you can see, there is the strikeout of the word bikeways that was removed, um, because it was repetitive due to the fact that the definition of bikeway already includes bike path. When you look at Mass General Law, that's pursuant to Chapter ninety E, Section one. Uh, I did, under Section G, fill in the speed limit of five miles an hour. I know, um, Mr. Cohen had indicated maybe deferring to HHS on that, they may have the expertise at the last meeting. I did add a comment to that, but I put in five miles an hour just at this point to, uh, have something in there, certainly open to any suggestions that you, that the board would have. And then you'll see Section I, in Section two, um, I had added the, the section would not apply to law enforcement, so any law enforcement that is looking to use an e-bike in the course of their duties or in the performance of, um, the discharge of their duties, that would, this would not apply to them. They would be able to continue using those bicycles. Uh, Section four is a new addition that is establishing, I would say, four new, um, offenses that are meant to address reckless or negligent conduct on the bicycle, and it establishes a fine structure for those offenses. I anticipate some questions about that, so I'm going to move on just to the next for a moment. Section four of legislation is a severability clause that was, I think, suggested by, um, Mr. Canty at the last meeting, so I did include that. And the only other note I would add is, it's my understanding there was some feedback about being able to still use electric bicycles on the rail trail if they were perhaps a Class One, perhaps only banning a Class Two bicycle from the rail trail or some variation of regulating classes on the rail trail. So, that is a comment for you all to consider, um, but those are the edits that have been made up until now, still able to make more and happy to hear any feedback or suggestions.
Mr. Canty?
Uh, thank you, Attorney McKay. So, I have a few questions. So, in terms of, starting at the top, in terms of the definitions, so Class Two, just to be clear, Class Two is still a bicycle with pedals that you may manipulate to propel the bike, but you wouldn't necessarily have to, would that be?
I have not been on any type of electric bike, but, uh, I understand that a Class Two, can you say that again?
Is that one, uh, that's still a bicycle, meaning you can pedal it manually, but you can turn on the electric motor to propel it and stop manually manipulating the bike?
That is my understanding, based on the definition that exists in Mass General Law.
So, uh, okay, so that would mean that this, this as written currently wouldn't cover, like, electric dirt bikes, right?
I don't believe so, no. Uh, it's my understanding electric dirt bikes, or what people commonly refer to as electric dirt bikes, are regulated under a separate section. I don't have that section.
Sure.
Tonight, I can certainly provide it.
If we could, I know that with the electric scooters, I had, um, asked for that provision, because I think my, and the reason, I articulated this to you, but, was I think that most residents, when they are complaining about e-bikes, that electric bicycles, electric scooters, and electric dirt bikes are all a catch-all term for e-bikes. So, if we're going to have a bylaw, we should, if we can regulate it within the town, we should, if we want to, and if we, if it's covered by another piece of state law, it should reference that so that people know what to look for to get the relief that they're seeking. In terms of the, um, then in terms of the, uh, Section Three, Bullet I, this section shall not apply to any law enforcement officer acting in the discharge of their duties, would it make sense to have that be a separate section, because we don't want really any of this to apply to law enforcement, right? So, we wouldn't want the police to have to register their own bikes, uh, we wouldn't want the police to, um, not be, to only be limited to certain paths or to, obviously we would train them not to operate recklessly.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
So, um, perhaps moving that as a separate section as opposed to, um, as part, a sub-bullet in that section.
Certainly, I could make that the new, in a draft, I could make that the new Section Three.
Okay.
Or I suppose put it after the severability clause, that would probably make more sense at the end.
Yeah, so I'd like that.
Yeah.
And then, um, Section Four, so, Section Four, I have a couple comments on Four, so, Four, first and foremost, for Bullets C and D, uh, my understanding is this may have been pulled from a different law, the funding or the, uh, the dollar amount, rather, for the fines, but it does seem odd that, and whoever operates an electric bicycle without stopping and making known their name, address, uh, leaves a scene after knowingly colliding, causing bodily injury to another, is fined five hundred to a thousand dollars. But if you negligently operate under D, so that the lives of the safety of the public may be endangered and by such operation you cause serious bodily injury, you could get off with as little as three hundred, but as much as five thousand. So, I just, I would think we would want to have the, the lower number on that second one be at least, if we can, make it at least, uh, the five hundred dollars, uh, so that you're not, it just looks odd otherwise. Uh, I, I'm also curious if we can, like, if the, because the AG's office has to approve this.
No, it's an act.
Of, right, this is, this is a special act, this is, so this is, this would have to go through the State House and the General Court and the, the, so do we, do we have a sense of the, of whether they're essentially adopting, like, criminal, uh, penalties, like negligent operation, reckless operation of a motor vehicle, leaving the scene of property damage or serious bodily injury? Would they, do we have a sense of the likelihood that they would permit, uh, that to occur?
I have, I have my own thoughts and my own suspicions. I, I will say I have not spoken to anybody. This was taken from, um, another piece of legislation that had been drafted, uh, so it was added in. Um, I'm not sure that either House Counsel or Senate Counsel would, up at the State House, would, um, agree, for lack of a better word, to carve out recklessly and negligent, reckless and negligent operation for e-bikes only in the town of Plymouth.
Right.
Whereas, uh, I shouldn't say whereas, it, because, as you know, the criminal laws are fairly specific, there's.
Right.
Operating negligently and recklessly for motor vehicles. I would suspect that they would want to maintain, um, their, the legislature's ability to deal with those. I don't know, though, to be honest, so, taken from another piece of legislation, it's here, I'm not sure that it would succeed in getting through.
Okay. Should, should Section Four have a, like, Section Three and Section One both open with notwithstanding any general or special law or something similar to that, should Section Four also include a, um, provision that this is in, in addition to, um, other penalties under other laws?
So, I'm sorry, Section One does say nonwithstanding, Section Two, I'm sorry, Section Three you're saying?
In addition to any other enforcement or penalty allowed under state or town bylaw.
Yep, so your question on Section Four is, should that say nonwithstanding?
Yeah, should it allow provisions like that so that other laws, as they're applicable, could still apply?
I think we could. I'm not sure that increases the likelihood that it gets.
I don't know either.
Through or not.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But, but at least if it did, that way it would be clear that this is in addition to any penalties that are already or will become.
Contemplated, yep.
Subsequently.
Yep.
Um, and then the last, which may be a little nitpicky, but the, um, circling back to Section Two, uh, Bullet D double I, where it says at least sixteen and a half years of age or older and possess a valid license, should we specify driver's license?
Certainly, I will do that.
That's all my comments.
Thank you.
Ms. Ayquinto?
Kate and Derek, thank you so much for the second iteration of this. I know this, this is not as straightforward as it, as, um, as people might think it is. There are so many different definitions and so many different moving parts, but I think this is great. This is, uh, uh, much clearer than the, the first go-around. I do have a couple of questions and, um, a couple of comments. Um, so, in the definitions, which I also like very much, um, I know that Mr. Canty has requested that we, you know, we, we include the exclusions, which is, you know, this does not address electric dirt bikes. There is also a Class Three, um, e-bike that a lot of people own and talk about, so I know that, um, that's not, we don't have a definition of a Class Three bicycle in Massachusetts, but people will have Class Three bikes in the town of Plymouth, so we need to let them know how those are, how those are, um, addressed too, so if we could include those in the exclusions. And my understanding of those bikes is that they can, they have a, um, a maximum speed that's significantly faster, up to twenty-eight miles per hour.
So, there is currently, I believe, pending legislation to define Class Three bikes at the State House. I don't know where exactly in the process that is. Um, I'm happy to pull that definition and mirror it here. If it gets accepted or if it passes, then we'd be all set. If it doesn't, um, then it doesn't, but I, I think I would probably use the proposed definition that's up there now, just to keep it uniform, because if it is accepted, I would anticipate it would go into, um, the existing laws it is.
Yeah, I would suggest we do that, just so that people who have the Class Three bike, which is significantly faster, don't think that this law doesn't apply to them.
Yep.
Um, that would, that would not be the outcome that we wanted. Um, okay, I do really like the, um, limiting, restricting this to age sixteen and a half and above and clarifying that, that was, that was great. Um, the other, the, the one that I'm really stuck on, um, is prohibiting e-bikes from bike paths, especially, uh, Class One bikes. So, the first go-around of this drew quite a bit of public comment, um, through Facebook, um, as well as through my email and phone, um, got a lot of calls, a lot of, a lot of people talking, chatting about this, and I would have to say that it's split pretty much on people that believe that they should be, um, prohibited from bike paths and people who believe that if you're a responsible rider, you should be able to ride them on a bike path. And I, and I do agree with that, especially, I think I brought up the issue last time, that people with mobility issues really count on these. There are people that are also commuting and that we want to continue to encourage that, so we don't want to discourage people that are using them, um, you know, responsibly. So, I'm wondering if it would be possible if we got some additional public input to that one piece, if we had a public hearing at the next select board meeting or did something like that, just to give more people a chance to, um, have a voice in this, so that we could, you know, say, I, I'm, I'm all for, I will always, um, advocate for getting input from the people who will be impacted by the decisions that we make, and I think that this is a perfect opportunity to do that, so I don't know what the rules are around that, but if we, you know, maybe even at the next select board meeting during public comment, we could invite people to talk specifically about that, but I, that would be my, my recommendation, just on that one piece.
Yeah.
Is that all right, Mr. Golden?
Well, uh, we can certainly solicit public comment. Uh, I don't think we can ha, I don't think we can reasonably fit in a public hearing.
Okay.
In our next meeting, we're, so we're on the road in, on November fourth. We're off on November eleventh due to the Veterans Day holiday. We come back on the, on the eighteenth and we have a, an already-packed agenda, uh, that includes our tax classification hearing.
Okay.
Which can last pretty long, and so I would, I would invite people to, um, public comment if, if they're interested in sharing their thoughts on this. I, I agree with you, though, Ms. Ayquinto, that, um, that's a problematic, um, element to this. Um, I also received, uh, emails and, and texts and calls on this, I, I'll highlight two, Lori Downs, who is a, a highly engaged town meeting member, and, uh, Tim Costello, um, who is a, um, a highly engaged, uh, Cal volunteer. Uh, I, I printed those for my colleagues, you all should receive those in, in your mailboxes and, uh, Jade, uh, received them as well, so, um, we can enter those into the record. But, uh, essentially, the, the, the crux of both emails is that, um, they or, or their loved ones have mobility issues that, um, only an e-bike allows them to enjoy bike, bike paths, so, I, I would advocate for removing bike paths from this. Bike paths are, they're not walking paths, they're, they're bike paths, so folks should be able to use them as such. And of course, obviously, people are walking on bike paths, but they, they can reasonably anticipate that there'll be bicycle traffic on them, so I would, I would advocate for removing that. Um, and again, I invite people to, from the public, to come to our, uh, next, our meeting, you know, either on the road on November fourth, uh, and express their opinion on that matter or to our November eighteenth meeting for, uh, public comment.
Yeah, I, can I just?
Yeah, please. Yeah, please.
Yeah, so, because there are, there are just as many people on the opposite side of that who use the trail frequently and are concerned about having e-bikes on them, um, at all. So, we just, I think we, just to be fair, we need to give them an opportunity to, to be heard as well, if they feel strongly about that. Um, so, that's what I would suggest. The other, the other suggestion that I would have is, um, I know that this is going to take a while to wind its way through the, whatever legal things has to, have to happen to it. Um, if we could get some signage on the rail trail, just around common bike courtesy, I think that would be a, a win for, you know, an interim solution, um, similar to what you would see on the canal. Um, if you, if you cycle down there, they, they have a sign every, every, periodically that will instruct people to make themselves known, if they're passing, to always pass on the left, um, and to, you know, maybe even to, just basic courtesy. Um, so if we could do that, I think that would be a good, good interim solution.
Mr. Cohen?
Ms. Iquinto points out, uh, the canal paths because they have electric bikes, bicycles, walkers, people fishing, there's a lot of, lot going on. Their paths are, you know, they're pretty wide, it's almost like a little road. So, it would be nice to look at their signage and their policy, because that's what I was generally thinking, that if you have an electric bike on the North Plymouth Rail Trail, um, you know, that's not as wide. And with proper signage and maybe even a lane, you know how you go down a street now, you'll see the bike lane?
Yep.
You might even indicate that's the bike lane, so that walkers, when they're walking, uh, not only have the, uh, the signage to indicate how to behave on the, on the, but the bikers do too. So, something to look into.
Okay. I can do that.
Other discussion? All right. Thank you, Ms. McKay.
Thank you. Um, can I just ask, I will make those updates and wait to hear the feedback, but?
Prior to December seventeenth.
Okay, so sometime after the eighteenth, but before the seventeenth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Brindisi, I'm mercifully throwing this to you at this point.
Tom, is this possible?
Please.
All right, I will keep it short, um, but I do want to start by congratulating David Gould and his team. Uh, today, we received notice from the state that the town of Plymouth received three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant award for the acquisition of the Gilmore property. So, as you recall, this is one of the articles that he brought forward at town meetings. So, congratulations to him and his team for bringing these, this, these dollars to the town. Um, I just want to report that, um, after two years vacancy, we now have a new director of the Center for Active Living. Her name is Cheryl Jones, and she began today. Uh, so, looking forward to working with Ms. Jones. Another item that has been coming up, it's a lot of conversations you hear, you will be hearing about, um, there's this ingredient called kratom that's been found in a lot of, um, drinks here in town and, and other communities as well. Uh, and there's been some momentum across the state banning this ingredient, um, from our, from the drinks that have been sold in our stores. So, the Board of Health will be holding a informational session on November ninth from six p.m. to eight p.m. to learn more about kratom and the negative effects it's having on our youth. So, more to come on that one. Uh, just for some DPW updates, Manu Nav and Obit Road were slated to be pulverized this week, so, um, hopefully that's not more than a mile, because that's going to cost us one point of one million dollars for that road. Um, and then I just want to make a comment that, um, the Plymouth Fall Hometown Cleanup will be taking place. Um, I would encourage folks, uh, if they want to sign up, to contact Patrick Farah. Uh, he's been organizing this for, for over a decade now. Um, this is where he will deliver you purple bags, uh, you can clean up your neighborhood, you leave them, you let, uh, you let Patrick know where you want them to be picked up, and the DPW will come pick them up. Um, so Patrick Farah's phone number, for anyone who's still awake and listening, is five zero eight, three two two, three three seven four. Uh, this is for the November first, uh, which is, um, this coming Saturday for the Fall Hometown Cleanup. Um, and then I just want to move on. Uh, today, we held our own trick-or-treating event, uh, given the fact that the trick-or-treating event that's put on by the chamber will take place this Friday, uh, and we're only open for a half a day. So, pleasantly surprised at how many children and families came out today, it was really a good crowd. Uh, so first, I want to thank Bob Noette, Amy Naples, and Walter Morrison. Um, the last couple of years, they've been, the three individuals go around, and they do our, um, they look at all of the different offices, and they determine who is the winner for the best decorated office. Uh, and I also want to thank Mr. Iquinto, um, for, I think this is four years in a row, for donating candy to Town Hall. Uh, so thank you, Mr. Iquinto, for donating that candy yet again this year. Uh, so again, it was a very, uh, successful event today. Um, and then, in an effort to boost our recruitment, uh, program, the Human Resources Department will be holding DPW interview fair this Thursday, October thirtieth, at Town Hall. Currently, we have fourteen folks who are scheduled for interviews. Uh, so we're welcoming more folks to come, uh, this coming Thursday, uh, to learn more about the DPW and joining our force. Uh, and then, two more items before I break for the evening. I want to thank Margaret McGrath. Um, she just retired, uh, from the library. Um, she served the town for twenty-three years and six months. So, Margaret, if you're listening, thank you for your service to this community over the, uh, past two decades. And then Mark Helmanek, who's a firefighter lieutenant, um, he's retiring this coming Friday after serving the town as a firefighter for twenty-five years. So, again, uh, heavy commitments by, by both Mark and Margaret, so we appreciate everything they've done over the course of their career for this community. Uh, and then, just as an announcement, although we are a couple of weeks away, it's brought to my attention that Plymouth South versus Plymouth North will be, uh, face-to-face at the Thanksgiving Day game this year. It's going to be held at Fenway Park, uh, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So, hopefully, we can get folks out there, because, um, it's a great opportunity for our, um, high schools to play at Fenway Park, especially football. So, I'm looking forward to seeing them the day before Thanksgiving. Pending any questions, that's all I have for tonight.
I will say that, uh, to buy tickets to that game, you have to choose a side, um, either Plymouth North or Plymouth South. So, pick wisely.
Uh, are there questions for the town manager? Hearing and seeing none, I'll move on. Uh, any new business? Mr. Canty?
Yes, so I was contacted by the Chair of the Climate Action Net Zero Committee, Dale Bryan, who wrote me a letter, uh, which I was intending to read, but, given the hour, I will summarize and just distribute to board members, uh, as an act of mercy. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Bryan had attended an event, uh, hosted at the library, um, put on by Sustainable Plymouth, uh, about Hurricane Helene, uh, and discussion centered around, after the screening, about the implementation of a, um, Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, which is, uh, an effort that many communities have to, uh, respond to one or more different types of emergencies, uh, extreme weather events, um, things like a nor'easter, things like wildfires, uh, things like coastal flooding events, tornadoes, things of that nature. Um, I know the town is part of our, our goals for this year, is undertaking a wildfire response plan. Christian Horvath of, of the Director of, um, Emergency Management was at the event and spoke, um, in part about the idea of a CERT in Plymouth, but it was not something that we're currently, like, undertaking. But given that we are undertaking the wildfire response plan, and it would be complimentary to that effort, and would likely take some time to create a CERT, because it usually involves creating, um, a network of community volunteers, and then training those volunteers would likely require a budgetary expenditure, uh, I would seek to have the board discuss, uh, to begin the process of creating a Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, in Plymouth, um, for Plymouth-related issues. There are some regional, uh, efforts underway in relation to, I think, the response to the, um, to the power plant when it was operating, uh, which would have been a bigger problem if there was a significant issue there than just the borders of Plymouth. But given that extreme weather is only going to intensify over the next several years, and we do have a history of significant wildfires, hurricanes, nor'easters in the community, uh, blizzards that can knock out power for large, uh, sections of town for days or weeks at a time, uh, it does seem, in my opinion, prudent to begin the process of creating a CERT. So, while we're assessing our budgetary priorities, I would hope that we could incorporate that into a future agenda to begin that process.
Ms. Iquinto?
Yeah, um, I, I got an interesting email from a resident today, um, asking about the town's AI policy. Um, apparently, Rockland just adopted a townwide AI policy. Um, so, we, she was, she was curious about what we were doing about that. And I think, Derek, you had, you had mentioned that there was something in the works, so the town was considering something, so I just thought?
Yeah, right now, um, well, I would say effectively, a few months ago, the IT director shut down any access to AI until they can further explore it and ensure that any use of AI, um, uh, would not pose a threat to our network. So, uh, I think eventually we'll see an AI policy, but right now, we don't have any access to AI.
Mr. Cohen?
Um, I, earlier tonight, I digress during our earlier discussion about Memorial Hall, but it was about the eighteen-twenty courthouse, and, uh, it'd be interesting, um, at some point, uh, trying to, uh, see what, uh, internally we're doing to, um, I know that the facilities director is looking at painting the cupola. Uh, there's also, uh, the Lady Justice and, uh, some of the work that was done to her, uh, back in twenty-fourteen. Um, she was, uh, constructed in nineteen ninety-eight. She's not terribly old. Uh, she was constructed of greenwood, which led to a lot of, uh, sap and, and powder, powder post beetles, and, uh, there's a lot of wood fiddling that went in, and she's showing that now. We knew that we only had a window there with, uh, Lady Justice, and, um, we had done some exploration of, uh, of, um, 3D printers, taking pictures of the original, uh, Lady Justice that was up there from eighteen-twenty to nineteen ninety-eight. Um, and, uh, some of those photographs could help with composite materials and different approaches. We looked at different museums that were exploring these things, so I'd be happy to work with anyone that, to convey this information, uh, along with the weather vane, the Cushing Brothers' weather vane that is, uh, damaged and needs to be, uh, looked at. So, um, look forward to those discussions, and, um, uh, thank you.
If, if you'd like to, I'm happy to work with you offline, and we can move those projects forward.
All right. Uh, I'll move on to letters. Uh, I do have one, and I'll take the lead from Mr. Canty and, uh, mercifully not read the entire thing, because it's quite lengthy. Uh, we received a, uh, I believe everyone received a message from Anne Marie Lyons and David Lyons. Uh, their concern, uh, is over the, um, reduction in funding for the Training Green, uh, that we, um, witnessed at the most recent town meeting. Uh, I, I agree with them. They, they talk about the need for, um, to restore this for both the, uh, the lighting and for the irrigation system. They primarily focus on the lighting in their letter, though. Uh, I agree with them. I think we ought to restore this funding in the next town meeting. Uh, I'd be happy to hear from my, my colleagues at a future meeting, but I'd like to see us find that money. I wouldn't do it through CPC funding, because that seemed to be the sticking point for folks. Uh, I think, but we also, we, we should identify a, a funding source that would be more palatable to them, so that we can get this project done in one swoop, rather than tearing it up, replanting grass, and then tearing it up to place irrigation and, uh, conduit for lighting.
Makes sense.
Great. Other letters?
To, uh, build on your letter that you received, I agree with you. I, I think that we need to, to look at, uh, the, uh, the funding sources. But I wouldn't rule out the Community Preservation Act Fund, because, uh, the lighting, if we were due lighting, if it was more historically accurate, uh, that would be covered under CPA expenditures. I think that was another sticking point, not the clarification of the, of the extent of that. So, based on the debate at town meeting, I, I wouldn't rule out the funding on the lighting being historically accurate, would be at CPA request.
Any old business? Mr. Canty?
So, I have a few things I just want to follow up on. So, I noticed that on November eighteenth, we're talking about the climate adaptation update, which I assume is a follow-up from my request to add that to the agenda. So, I appreciate that that's on our coming-soon docket here, but I just want to follow up on some of the other items, uh, that I'm looking forward to us discussing. So, I had asked that we talk about the land acknowledgement. I brought that up on September sixteenth. I was curious when that will be on an agenda.
At our last meeting, I told you I would let you know when that is. I do have a meeting scheduled for, uh, the seventh of November with Melissa Ferri. I've asked the Vice Chair to join me at that meeting. Um, so sometime after the seventh of November.
Okay, well, please do keep me posted as to that particular item. I will continue to follow up. Public safety and ICE activity in Plymouth, I had asked to add that to the agenda on September thirtieth. I was curious when we were going to have that discussion from the board, so we can talk about local options to protect the rights of our citizens and, uh, better interface with federal actors conducting their activities within our borders.
As I said at our last meeting, Mr. Canty, it is in the long list of items that you've requested.
And where about that, on that list, would it be?
To be determined.
Okay. I had also requested at our last, uh, public meeting two weeks ago, that we review and streamline, uh, review for potential streamlining the open space donation process. That was also discussed at the Open Space Committee meeting, that Ms. Iquinto and I had the opportunity to attend. So, I know there's significant community interest in seeing that, because I know open space in particular, with the changes to tax title, as I mentioned earlier, uh, when I brought this up the first time, are, are concerned about their future viability in preserving new lands within town, and donations would be a, a beneficial source of that. So, I'm curious if that is in the queue yet, and if so, when we would be hearing that.
To be determined.
Okay. Uh, and I also mentioned, uh, wanting to streamline the process for businesses to navigate town regulations, and a potentially related or separate item, to develop a town-wide guide to permitting, to allow businesses to operate, open, and, uh, function within the borders of Plymouth more easily. We often get, uh, complaints about being not a business-friendly community, we're losing economic, um, development opportunities to other communities, we're sometimes losing economic, um, commercial tax base revenue because of shrinking properties in that regard. So, I'm curious if that has been added to an agenda yet, and if so, uh, or in the queue yet for an agenda, and if so, when that would be.
Uh, the agenda items that have been scheduled are on the bottom of your agenda, Mr. Canty.
All right, well, I will continue to follow up so that we can, we don't lose track of any of these items that I think are important to the future of Plymouth and advancing the goals of this board, as stated in the fiscal year goals that we set as a group back in June.
Thank you.
Any other old business? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Is it seconded?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Ms. Iquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes, we're adjourned.[1764.92]